Commissioner Marchetti?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
All right, welcome everybody. Before I open the floor for public comments, it's gonna be agenda items only. It's on agenda items only. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
That is right. Thought we did it the other way. All right, you've got three minutes.
Thank you.
We're not gonna... Hold on. There will be no back and forth. A lot of people don't hear us when we say that, and they ask us questions, and then they look to us for the answers. But we have a lot of people here tonight, so traditionally, we don't have back and forth. If you have any questions for the board or a specific commissioner, wait till afterwards, and talk to that specific person, and I'm sure we will stay here as long as it takes to get the question answered or send you away with a guarantee or something, and we'll do it later. Mr. Grice, you are up.
Thank you. Chairman Jones, respected board members, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight on an agenda item. My name is Michael Grice. I'm a LaGrange Township resident. I retired from the law enforcement field with approximately forty-five-plus years of service here in this county. Law enforcement and public safety is a factor, and I believe important for everybody. Public safety in my eyes is EMS, fire department, police officers, animal control, sheriff deputies. But one's office is out of sight, is the prosecutor's office, and they are part of a team in the public safety arena. With law enforcement and the prosecutors, they speak for the victims here in Cass County. Within the prosecutor's office, attorneys are assigned cases, and some are resolved in weeks, while others go on for years, and victims have to wait for justice. We have talked and worked on this here in the county, and how to retain our officers for better pay and benefit. Because other agencies were paying better wages or benefits, we were losing some of our officers. The same thing is happening in the prosecutor's office. If you look back several years, we're a training agency with a revolving door for assistant prosecutors. With being in mobile society, they're leaving for better pay and benefits. And when that happens, victims are being victims again because the outcome of their cases are being delayed. The prosecutor has on agenda a request in writing with documents that I went through line by line, and a resolution for pay changes for assistant is not an unreasonable request. It's time to show we are concerned about what happens in Cass County. Sign a resolution number tonight, and by unanimous vote, pass that resolution. It's the right thing to do, and thank you for listening.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else there upon the way? State your name and where you're from, pretty please.
I'm Jan Wagner. My wife Lois and daughter Elizabeth own Wagner Family Funerals, just up on the next corner. I am a board member of the local Chamber of Commerce. I'm also secretary of Stone Lake Woods, which is the federal Section 202 housing for the elderly that's located here in Cassopolis, and I was privileged to serve as a trustee of the village of Cassopolis. So I appreciate you and all of the work you've done. Logan, Roseanne, we also served on the Economic Development Corporation together. And I'm aware of the difficult decisions that have to be made. Especially before we had all of the growth that we are experiencing now, I was privileged to be a part of those decisions. But I was also privileged to be a part of the difficult decisions when there wasn't a lot of growth, and when we were striving to get growth, we still never hesitated to try to take care of our officers. It was a very difficult thing to take care of local law enforcement, especially when you're trying to distribute some limited amount of dollars. But I urge you, now that there is growth, and again, the Cassopolis officers have had many adjustments to their pay to bring them up to parity so that we would not lose them as we were at that time, I think it's extremely important now that we have growth. You know, our efforts were intentional and deliberate. I see at the other end of this building, you have made those decisions that are intentional and deliberate for the growth and the betterment of the community, and we cannot do it at the expense of law enforcement. In fact, with the growth, we must increase all of the law enforcement. Not only make sure that the county sheriff has everything that he or she needs to do, his job along with his deputies, but certainly then the arm that they support, and which looks out over and after all of us, the prosecutor's office, to make sure that with the influx of people, and unfortunately with that, we know comes an influx in those who are not looking for the betterment of the community. There must be a balance, there must be a force to stand against that, and that would be the prosecutor's office. So I urge you to make the necessary requirements, the necessary increases, so that he can continue to do the job, and his office then can continue to do that job as well. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Matthews. I am the friend of the court director and the Circuit Probate Family Court Administrator. I wanted to take some time this evening to thank you for recognizing the achievements of our deputy friend of the court Raven Bakeman this evening in her graduating as a certified court executive. That is no small feat. She put in over two-hundred-and-forty hours in this program. She did it at an accelerated pace while working full-time and being a mother of three children and actively involved in the community. To say I am proud of her is an understatement. But I'm also proud of the investment that this board and our judges and our leaders have put into training and investing in our employees. I think it's critically important. It shows that you value them, it shows that you value quality customer service for the clients we serve and having the skills that are needed by our employees. It's an amazing program. We had two other employees graduate as certified court managers today in Lansing as well, and I'm looking forward to getting that press release out too, so you can celebrate with us on that. But I do thank you for supporting our employees and recognizing their critical achievements.
Thank you. I forgot to mention that we have... Everybody has three minutes. So if you hear this obnoxious alarm go off... Yes, ma'am.
It won't take me three minutes. I'm Judy Lyons. I am a member of St. Paul Lutheran Church Council, and I also am a director of the CDC, the Open Arms Child Development Care System at the church. We've been in Cassopolis, well, in Cass County, for probably about twenty-eight years now. What drew us to this community was that it's a nice, friendly community, and it is pretty well free of any kind of crime, and that any... We looked at other areas and that, like Elkhart and that, and we chose Cass County, and that as being a safe place to live. And that, we're our taxpayers, but we'd like to see our taxes being used the way that they should be, you know, and that. And we think our priority is safety, and that. We know Victor Fitz and that, and we know what a good job he's been doing and his staff, and we appreciate them, and we want to retain them, and that. And the way things are going these days and that, with everything being more expensive and that, we really don't want to have a merry-go-round of different people coming in and that, taking over jobs, and that, that, you know, we are satisfied with what we have, and we would like to retain it, and that. So we encourage you to thoughtfully think over having raises for the prosecutor's office, and that I think they're a very, very good, very good team, and we sure want to keep them that way.
Thank you, ma'am. That was not me. That voice.
Good evening. Thank you guys for allowing me to speak at this time. My name is Darren Beddinger. I've lived in Jefferson Township for eight years. I'm originally from Warsaw, Indiana. I currently serve as the vice chair of the Cass County Historical Commission and the president of the Cass County Historical Society. Two weeks ago, Victor Fitz came to me and said that he was concerned about some of the shortcomings that they had in our local law enforcement. I was not aware of this problem at the time he told me about it, but I did get concerned when he said that he was having some difficulties in that department. This week, I became more concerned about the shortcomings because on Tuesday, I found out at work that a man I worked with for seventeen years was killed in a hit-and-run accident in the southeast corner of Cass County. Now, Warsaw is about fifty-five miles from here, it takes me about an hour to get here, and they were somewhat familiar with our community, but they're out of touch with what's going on up here. I'm getting questions at work about this case up there. And the reason why I'm concerned is because I was just told about the shortcomings that we have. I'm hiding things from the people at work. Like, I'm telling them that I don't know what's going on, I haven't heard anything. In the back of my mind, I'm wondering what is going on with this case? Because, you know, we have a problem supporting our law enforcement. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that the problems we have in this community reflect our community outside of the community and other communities. We have a responsibility to the outside world to continue to hold up the law enforcement in this area so that we come across as a safe place to be and a safe place to live. And when I had heard that there's some shortcomings and some problems in the law enforcement area, I just became a lot of really concerned. I'm really hoping that you guys consider the proposals that Victor has put forth. I really urge you to back him and to support him and to think about how we look outside this community to the rest of the world. So again, thanks for your time, and thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Frichette. I live in DeWajac, Michigan. My husband and I moved to DeWajac in nineteen-seventy-one, and he has passed away along with his son several years ago. But I continue to live in DeWajac along with a son and a daughter. I am relatively... I feel relatively safe in my community, and I give a lot of credit to Victor and his office for overseeing the safety of our community and bringing criminals, relatively few as they are, hopefully, will continue to be that way, bringing them to justice. And I support the fact that his staff needs help. They need a pay raise. We are all suffering with the prices these days, and I would appreciate if you would consider that and consider the job that they do to keep our community safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Marie Anderson, and I'm the victim advocate in the Cass County Prosecutor's Office. I'm reading a letter to you that Tiffany Montenegro wrote. Greetings. My name is Tiffany Montenegro. I no doubt know some of you in this room this evening. I hope all of you are doing well. For sixteen years, I served as an assistant prosecutor and chief assistant prosecutor in Cass County. I learned a tremendous amount while protecting the public and doing justice in the Cass County Prosecutor's Office. I was honored to serve as the county's drug prosecutor, as well as handling many of the most serious sex offenses in southwest Michigan. I also became quite experienced and successful in handling many crimes of violence, including homicide. I loved the Cass County area and had planned to spend the balance of my career in your community. I even moved much of my family to the area to establish Cass County as our homestead. However, I sadly made the tough decision two years ago to move with my husband and kids out of Cass County and onto Georgia. It was not an easy decision. But sadly, Cass County was no longer fairly and adequately compensating its assistant prosecutors. The 2021 class compensation study, very frankly, over the prosecutor Fitz's objections, shortchanged and underclassified the importance and pay of our assistant prosecutors. This, coupled with a disappointing change to the retirement plan, made it difficult for me to remain in Cass County. I took a job in Georgia in a similar-sized prosecutor's office with similar responsibilities, but was actually paid more than the elected prosecutor in Cass County. I know that many of my colleagues at the time also left the Cass County Prosecutor's Office over the following months to get better pay in other counties. We all considered prosecutor Fitz a good boss, and we all enjoyed working for him. We learned a tremendous amount, but we ultimately took that experience to other venues, which were willing to pay us what we are worth. This is terribly challenging time for prosecutors nationwide. Those officers who don't properly pay their assistants are seeing their communities endangered by vacancies and inexperience. Cass County is at the bottom of the pay scale for assistant prosecutors in southwest Michigan, as well as comparing poorly to other like-sized counties in Michigan. I was thrilled to hear that you are considering a modest pay increase for the assistant prosecutors in Cass County. I know the attorney's prosecutor Fitz has managed to get to come to your community, and they are very good. But they will not stay if you don't correct their pay scale and properly pay them. This motion will correct the flawed scoring of assistant prosecutors from the 2021 class compensation study, as well as help prosecutor Fitz find and keep top-notch crime fighters. That, as much as anything else, is what your voters, including the members of my family who are still in Cass County, want. Thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to hearing that you voted in favor of this resolution, which will support public safety. Tiffany Montenegro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairperson and members of the commission. My name is Ken Stecker, and I was away from the prosecutor's office for approximately sixteen years. I am now back with the Cass County Prosecuting Attorney's Office as an assistant prosecuting attorney. I came back to work for the Cass County Prosecutor's Office because of one reason and one reason only: Victor Fitz. He and his staff are the real deal. They work hard, and they do a tremendous amount of work. And here's what I've noticed since I've been gone the last sixteen years, looking at it from the reality of a prosecutor's office and the changes that prosecutor's offices have had to go through the last sixteen years. Here's an example. His office contends with a very high caseload of complex cases. That was not so much the case sixteen years ago, but yet comparatively low salaries for his APAs. Practicing attorneys in other areas, including court-appointed defense attorneys, have addressed this issue by obtaining higher salaries for themselves. With the addition of body-worn cameras that was not here sixteen years ago, his office contends with large volumes of digital information, and then his office must determine the immiscibility of evidence based on the probative value and whether the chain of evidence was established and followed. That takes a tremendous amount of time and effort. The scope of potentially exculpatory evidence that must be disclosed under the two United States Supreme Court cases standards and the ethical guidelines his office must follow under the rule of professional conduct has expanded in the last sixteen years tremendously. Next, the increasing volume of potentially relevant digital information, video footage, and other information from technological devices and tools can significantly add to the amount of time needed to sufficiently examine and investigate the evidence in order to make decisions about whether to drop or pursue a case. You need experienced prosecutors for that. His staffing and other resources in his office may have a difficult time in keeping pace with these increasing demands. These are just some. I've just named some because of three-minute allocation to me of the challenges that I've seen in his office and what he faces. And I've only been there a little more than a month. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sherry Cole. On April ten, twenty-thirteen, my parents were... My parents' car was hit head-on by an impaired driver. My dad died at the scene, and my mom passed away three days later. I wrote this out because I didn't want this to happen. My siblings and I had no idea what was to come regarding the legal aspect of it all. We were contacted shortly after the accident by prosecutor Fitz's office and asked to join him in a meeting so that he could explain what would happen. We were obviously very heartbroken, but felt so cared for by everyone in the prosecutor's office. They kept us abreast of each step of the way, and someone was always, and I mean always, available to answer our questions and to offer moral support. All of this was done in a most compassionate manner. It was of utmost importance for my sister and I to meet the man who killed our parents, not only because we wanted to tell him face-to-face what he took from us, but also to offer him our heartfelt forgiveness, because that's what our parents would have wanted from us. Prosecutor Fitz made that happen. He worked tirelessly to make that happen. My sister and I felt respected, heard, and deeply cared for through the entire journey, and I can't begin to tell you what gems you have in the prosecutor's office. I'm truly convinced my sister and I wouldn't be in the place of recovery we are had it not been for the genuine care from Victor Fitz and his staff. I know money is tight, and you have to make some hard decisions, but I hope and pray that you put what money is possible behind the prosecutor's office. They deserve to be taken care of because they have a very difficult job to do. If you would just put yourself in my place or the place of any of these others who have lost loved ones by an act of crime and understand what we have gone through and what Victor Fitz and Marie and just everyone in that office has done to make it less painful for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry for your loss.
Good evening, guys and girls. My name is Aiden Chassie. I'm assistant prosecutor, Cass County. I graduated Cassopolis High School, and I've also interned at the office, my high school, college, and law school. I'm coming up on my third year as assistant prosecutor. Currently handle the cases, important cases of neglect and abuse in our family court. And also, I'm proud that I represented this area in the Michigan Court of Appeals on a rather complicated matter and a family matter. But enough about me. I want to quickly read you a letter sent to our office today by a prosecution legend. Good evening. My name is Bill Forsyth. I served as both assistant prosecutor and elected prosecutor for forty-five years. For forty years, I worked for Kent County Prosecutor's Office in Grand Rapids, ten years as an assistant, and thirty years as an elected prosecutor. I also served as assistant prosecutor in Lapeer County at the beginning of my career, and as well as Aronak County at the end of my career. Lapeer and Aronak are similar in many aspects to Cass County. I was also humbled and honored to have been appointed by former Michigan Attorney General Bill Schutz to oversee the investigation into the Michigan State University's handling of Larry Nassar's sexual abuse case. I can say without hesitation that nothing will ever match or replace the joy, the pride, and the heartache I experienced as prosecutor. Prosecution is one of the most important jobs in society. A prosecutor's office is appropriately... That is appropriately staffed with experienced and well-trained attorneys makes a difference in the quality of life for the safety of our community. I have known your local prosecutor, Victor Fitz, for many years. He is valued colleague and a highly respected prosecutor around the state. He has over forty years of prosecution experience. There are few in this state who know better what a prosecutor's office is tasked to do, and there are few in this state who have a better grasp on what the needs are of a prosecutor's office. He is an expert in your community in that regard. Cass County is extremely fortunate to have him and his assembled staff as assistant prosecutors. I also know that he is facing a serious challenge when it comes to staffing and sufficient pay for his assistants. There are chronic staffing shortages in prosecutor's offices, both in Michigan and in the nation. Proper pay is a key component when it comes to hiring, and just as importantly, retaining good, experienced prosecutors, assistant prosecutors. The investment is modest, but the dividends are significant when it comes to the safety of our community. I encourage you to ensure that you have a market-competitive pay for your assistant prosecutors. It can quite literally make a difference between life and death for your constituents. Thank you, Phil Fawcett.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Rawning. I am an assistant prosecutor here in Cass County. Some of you may recognize me or remember I was here from 2004 to 2008 as the chief assistant prosecutor. And for the bulk of the last fifteen years, I have traveled as a defense attorney, both in county and federal courts. I have practiced everywhere from the bridge to the Indiana and Ohio State lines, every county to the west of Lansing, and half of the counties to the east. So I bring a unique perspective about prosecutor's offices, and how they are staffed, and how talented they can be, and how effective they are. And I have been back here in this office for just short of a year, and in that year, it has absolutely astounded me how fortunate this county is to have the staff that we do have. I do know there has been constant turnover over the years. We are now settled, I believe. I think we're still short-staffed, and it shows. But the team that we have now currently has over one-hundred years of legal experience in capital, all felony cases, every kind of offense you could imagine. And what I can tell you from my experience, and taking myself out of the equation altogether, is compared to equal-sized counties with equal-sized populations and equal-sized offices, this office is the most talented office I have encountered. And it would be a shame if that were not to be the case six months from now. That is a serious risk if the compensation does not match the talent. Nobody joins a prosecutor's office to get wealthy. Nobody works for government service to get wealthy. And that's not what we're asking for. But we do have value, and we deserve to be compensated for that value, even in light of the fact that we are government employees. It is a joy to work for the county again. I am enjoying it. We had a verdict today in a multiple felony case where a gentleman slashed somebody's face open with a knife and had a three-hour siege at his house that required breaching. And this trial took three days, and he was convicted, and he's going to prison. Since I've been back, we've had five trials, all of which have ended in convictions, including a very serious criminal sexual conduct case that Ms. Foster and myself tried. These are the kinds of cases that a less talented, less experienced prosecutor's office could risk losing. And that is because each of these cases has incredibly complex legal issues. This case this week involved self-defense statute. Issues came up at the last possible moment, on the fly. We managed to keep the issues out, and it led to a verdict of guilty. It's entirely possible that would not have happened if we had somebody fresh out of law school. So I would ask, as you consider what you want to do next, consider what your constituents want you to do next. Consider to the cost-value relationship, a minor increase in compensation...
That's an obnoxious thing that I was talking about.
Would lead you to an incredible benefit. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, ma'am. I apologized for that thing a long time ago, so...
Hello, my name is Rick Singer. My family has been associated with Cass County for seventy-four years. My mother was a former employee of the county Board of Commissioners and Clerk's Office, and was actually one of the clerks for this body itself, the recording secretary. My father was the village president for Cassopolis for at least ten, if not more, years. And I worked for the Cass County Road Commission for twenty-five years. In my years of working with the road commission in Cass County in the state of Michigan, Cass County was noted for two things: roads and law enforcement. If you look back at the roles that we've had, the constituents that you've had for attorneys or prosecuting attorneys and sheriffs has been outstanding in the role and annals of the state of Michigan. I just hope that you guys would continue to support the prosecutors and the officers for the county of Cass to continue to protect us in this very changing world that we all live in. Thank you for your understanding, and hope you continue to support our law enforcement officers and prosecutors.
Thank you, sir. What's your last name again?
Singer. S-E-N-G-E-R.
All right, thank you. Vic, you know you're gonna have time when we get to the actual...
I do, I do. And certainly I will honor the resounding sound there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And just as you said, I do know there's some time, but I did want to just comment on a few things. One is that I do know that there are a number of myths that have been floating out there here recently, and I just want to address some of them and maybe some of them later. And one of them is that... One of the first myths is that since the 2021 class comp study, no one else has asked for or received a grade change, and that simply is not accurate. Since 2021, the class comp study, eleven other positions have received, requested grade changes.
Since 2021, the Class Comp Study, 11 other positions have received, requested grade change. Another myth, asking that we're asking for huge pay increases. This simply isn't true. This will impact my budget this year by approximately $4,000. It will impact next year's budget by approximately $12,000. That is a minute amount of money. Other claims that there is no crisis in prosecution going on, and that simply isn't true. I mean, you've supplied with information about that. Just Google the terms prosecutor staffing crisis, and the articles will continue to flow. And every position we have in this county is valuable, but my office is the office, again, similar to the Sheriff's Department, where has just seen constant turnover and constant shortages. We, for the last three years, 20 to 40% of my attorney's staff has been vacant. And again, these positions are important, but we aren't seeing that in magistrates, referees, and other county employee groupings, except perhaps, again, the Sheriff's Office. Another claim is that this will result in a lawsuit. Anything in the world can result in a lawsuit, and that's can be an easy claim to make, but if we look for the other 11 grade changes that occurred since the Class Comp Study came into effect, there have been no lawsuits filed. You know, again, the belief that it would happen now is, I think, is spurious at best. Another claim, prosecutors get the same pay as indigent defense attorneys. And I want to preface this by saying the indigent defense attorneys earn every penny that they get of compensation. They do a good job for their defendants in this county, and they deserved to be compensated properly. But the claim that we get the same pay is simply not true. We get compensated about half the rate for doing frankly far more, because we just have more responsibilities. This commission, every one of you, I believe, unanimously agreed to support taxpayer money, which was helped to create this imbalance that we have, to give them their increased pay, which, again, I'm not griping on that. They deserve what they're getting paid, and it was a good thing. But again, the public wants you to stand up for the victims of crime and for law enforcement and for public safety as well. Another claim, assistants are some of the highest-paid, Assistant Prosecutors are some of the highest-paid employees in the county. Not true. There are 15 grades. My Assistant Prosecutors are at 10 and 12, far from the top. And this is despite the fact that the grading of this by myself and others say that I should be at what we're requesting, 12 and 14. But thank you for the time, and again, shortly I will talk about other things potentially later as asked. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. Carol Beeler, resident of Penn Township, Probate Judge. The three things that I'm commenting on tonight as far as agenda items is I-1, which is the recognition of Raven Bateman. So thank you very much for doing that tonight. We are very proud of her. Nothing more needs to be said about that. Q1, which is the elected official and chief deputy salary policy. I just want to commend that we got this so quickly back on the agenda and are indicating to our chief deputies that we want to make sure that they're well-paid, because they are some of our most important positions in terms of running operations that are statutorily required, not more important than anyone else, but it's important for them to have, feel like they have the same security in knowing what their pay is as the other non-union employees. So I just want to thank you for that. Thirdly, I was not going to speak on Q3, the prosecutor's office situation, but I'm a little alarmed by the precedent that we're setting here tonight, that it's a dangerous proposition that we're going to come into public meetings in front of you, who are our funding unit, and start talking about how we pay particular talent, particular people, because we're supposed to be paying for positions. And it's the job of the elected officials in charge of all of these positions to do job performance reviews and to choose who to hire and how to handle the positions once we have the positions funded. And so it's just a little concerning to me. Secondly, it's concerning to me that this is being presented tonight as though we're in a, it's a dangerous situation, because it sounds like the public thinks that we're not going to be able to continue to carry out our duties. And I feel that every year, at Budget Time, we're having a conversation with all of you to figure out what can we afford to staff, and what can we afford to do, and what are we gonna cut, and what are we gonna pay for? Because let's face it, every dollar we spend, we have to have a revenue source for it. And this, again, feels like a very dangerous proposition, because if we're allowed to parade in all of the citizens to say particular cases that have worked out well, et cetera, we're gonna have to do that the same for all of our positions. And I don't know about for everybody else's area, but that's over 40 positions in the courts. And I certainly get the same letters, and I certainly get the same feedback about the wonderful job that our staff is doing, but I think that's going to create a very unmanageable process moving forward if this is how we're gonna proceed. So, you know, I'm just concerned also, because I keep hearing things like, this is an us-and-them situation, like some people have value and some people don't. And that's not how I view our county operations. I'm proud to live in Cass County. I'm proud to work in Cass County. I've served as an Assistant Prosecutor. I've served as a public defender. I've served for the courts, and now I serve as your probate court judge. And, you know, all of the employees are important. All of the jobs they perform are important. So I just hope that you'll consider all of that. And just to wrap up my sentence, I know my time is up. It's very dangerous to just talk about wages and not consider compensation packages, because we get a package here. It's not just about the pay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Summy, and my, our father passed away here in a car accident some years ago. And I just, I've heard that they're having struggles here at the prosecutor's office. And it's, I just want to let you know, we're here, we were so grateful for Victor Fitz and the people that work there, how much they helped us. They cared about us. They talked to us. They answered any questions. We knew if we needed help, they were there to help us. And I want to be here to say a word, to try helping them, because they were just there. And I know they've been there for anybody else. We've gone to the memorial service every year, and you hear all these people talk and how grateful they are for the prosecutor's office, the people working there, and how much they help all of us, that comfort us when we needed it. So I hope you have in your hearts to help them back. They can use it, and we need it in this day and time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Mary Foster. I'm the Chief Assistant Prosecutor at the Cass County Prosecutor's Office. I'm also a Silver Creek resident in Cass County. I moved here for several reasons, but one of the reasons I moved here is Cass County is a beautiful place to live, but it's also a safe place to live. And that's due in part to the great job that the police departments and the sheriff department does here, but also to the prosecutor's office, because cases that people who get arrested, if there's no prosecutor, the case ends there, and it goes no further in court. So we need prosecutors to take the cases further than just the arrest, to get convictions, and to keep people accountable for the crimes they commit here. One of the challenges facing prosecutor's office, and they're facing all over the country, but in particular, we're seeing it in Michigan, is a shortage of prosecutors. And that's due to, as one of my colleagues spoke, Ken Stecker, is that we are still paying prosecutors low wages, and there's a high burnout rate, because responsibilities have increased tenfold in the past 24 years since I began as a prosecutor. One of the biggest differences, differentiates us from other employees in the county is we are public safety employees, and there is a crisis in prosecutor's offices. And that's what needs to be addressed. Every employee is important here in Cass County, but there is no crisis facing the other employees as there is in the prosecutor's office, or that's facing other employees in other prosecutor's office. And that needs to be addressed. Now, I'm asking for raises for my colleagues. I, myself, am not on the table for a raise, and I just want to make that clear. So I have no stake in the claim for myself. I'm asking for my colleagues, because we have a great team, a wonderful team right now. And that is due in part to Mr. Fitz being able to cobble together this team from his contacts. These are all experienced prosecutors he brought in. They did not come here for the salaries. They came here to work to be as prosecutors, and they came to work for Mr. Fitz. And that needs to be considered as well. With these current salaries, you are not going to get this kind of experience in this office. And we did get a guilty verdict today, and what Jason Running failed to mention is that he was the attorney who got it. And he's got, I believe, 18, 20 years' experience as a lawyer and as a prosecutor. We cannot put a first-year prosecutor in these kind of cases. They will not be able to win these cases in court, not because they're not talented, because first-year prosecutors cannot go up against a 15-year defense attorney and win cases. It's not feasible. The model we have right now is not a sustainable model to keep people that we have in this office, or to keep other, you know, experienced prosecutors coming to this office. We also have Mr. Stecker, who, again, is a tremendous asset to the office. Mr. Stecker is not a long-term attorney here. Mr. Stecker is, has 30-plus years as a prosecutor. He will be leaving at some point. I thank you for your time. I thank you for the opportunity for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Paul Dellinger. I'm a pastor at St. Paul Lutheran Church here in Cassopolis. Also, we operate Open Arms Child Development Center, licensed daycare and preschool, right here in Cassopolis. I'm also a husband and father of four small children, and just here to speak in favor of the initiative, because public safety is number one for our families, for our churches, for our community. And so just wanted to keep it brief and say that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, we'll close the floor for public comment. Commissioner Lee. No, next. Item Foxtrot. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, moving on. Commissioner Lee.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion on the floor in support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. As people leave, if there's people out there in the hallway, there are seats open here. You all can come on in, have a seat. All right. Item Hotel, public hearing. What we have to do for this? I'll just open the floor, and then...
Motion to open.
All right.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in support, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we have a time limit for that?
I think it's the same as normal. Three minutes.
I mean, a time limit to keep it open, unless nobody...
If anybody wants to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's like only the second time in three years I've done that. Do we have anybody that's gonna speak for the... All right. Hearing none, I need a motion. Oh, we got one.
Okay, I'm a little bit nervous. I've never done this before. I'm used to talking...
You'll be okay.
I'm used to talking in front of second graders and fifth graders. So...
Yeah. I can start sucking my thumb or something.
My name is Juanita Curtis, and I grew up here in Michigan, lived here all my life, my grandparents, my parents. And when it comes to asking for an increase in taxes, it struck me pretty hard, because it seems like each year our taxes continue to go up. And I know that more money is needed for various things within the county. However, I'm on a fixed income. And fortunately for me, with my Social Security and my pension, I do okay, but think of the people who do not have a pension and who rely only on Social Security, and who may not have had the opportunity to work, you know, as long as, perhaps, as long as I have. And I taught six years in Michigan, and I taught 24 years in South Bend, Indiana. For me, I don't get the benefits that Michigan teachers get when they retire. I have to pay my, and as well as other people who are on a fixed income and, you know, are relying on their Social Security. I have to pay, you know, the premiums for health insurance. I have other life insurance premiums that I'm paying, and so on and so forth. Fortunately for me, I do have, well, there are two properties that I'm paying taxes on, my parents' property and my own property. My parents passed away, their property has gone to me. Fortunately, for, you know, at their home, they have a farm, and I have a farm at my home. The lease of the property helps me pay for the, pay for the property taxes at my home and at my parents' home. However, as property taxes increase, then that means I may have to increase what I'm charging the farmer to lease the property. Farmers already are struggling and having trouble making ends meet. The equipment costs, their gas, so on and so forth. It's just a lot. And so I would ask you to please consider those that are struggling to pay their taxes, who don't even have that extra income from a farmer. And, you know, and what their, it may even lead to someone losing their property, even if it's $100 extra dollars. It could be $100 extra that they just don't have. So I'm just asking you just to consider these things that I've mentioned, and I'm sorry I'm so nervous, but I'm not used to doing this.
You're right on time. I turned off that obnoxious thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just turned it off, so there's a three minutes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you for what you did for us in being a teacher.
All right, thank you.
Tough job.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Hi.
Tammy Stewart, Equalization Director. I just want to make you aware that the purpose of this hearing is to let people know that the amount of revenue we receive is increasing. However, the tax rate is not increasing. The amount of revenue increases each year as the taxable value goes up. Everyone's taxable value went up the minimum, the CPI, Consumer Price Index. So your taxable value went up multiplied by an actual lower revenue this year, because it was rolled back because of headly rollback. So the actual county allocated is lower than what it was last year. But everyone's taxable value goes up, times the levy, gives us more revenue. And that's why we have to have this hearing, is to notify the public we're gonna get more revenue. It's not because we increased the tax rate. The tax rate actually went down. But everyone's taxable value went up because of the Consumer Price Index, and that is in the calculation.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yes, thank you.
I move we close the hearing.
Second.
All right, motion on the floor in support. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, a good fun one. Roseanne, would you like to...
Yes, I'd be happy to.
You do it so well.
R-082-24 is a resolution to recognize completion of the National Center for State Court Institutes for Court Management Certified Court Executive Program. Whereas Deputy Friend of the Court Raven Bateman has devotedly served the Cass County community since September 2005, holding position in the Clerk Register's Office, District Court, and Prosecutor's Office before joining the Cass County Friend of the Court as the Deputy Friend of the Court in 2022. Whereas Deputy Friend of the Court Raven Bateman graduated as a National Center for State Courts Institute for Court Management Certified Court Executive at a ceremony held in the Michigan Supreme Court at the Hall of Justice on May 2, 2024. Whereas she previously graduated as a Certified Court Manager in a virtual ceremony in August of 2022. Whereas the National Center for State Courts is a nonprofit organization founded in 1971 and acts as a hub of information and resources available to court systems across the country. and acts as a hub of information and resources available to court systems across the country. Whereas NC, SCS, S, training courses help keep state court operations consistent across the nation and provide court professionals with the knowledge, skills, and abilities to be effective court leaders. Whereas Deputy Friend of the Court Raven Bateman completed 13 courses focused on accountability and court performance, case flow and workflow management, budget and fiscal management, project management purposes and responsibilities of courts, workforce management, visioning, and strategic planning, leadership, modern court governance, educational development, executive decision-making, operations management, and public relations. And whereas Deputy Friend of the Court Raven Bateman completed over 260 hours of study and instruction to accomplish graduating as a certified court manager and a certified court executive. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cass County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes and congratulates Deputy Friend of the Court Raven Bateman for her significant educational accomplishments and meritorious services to our community. And this is adopted this sixth day of June 2024. And I move we approve this resolution.
Second.
Motion on the floor in support. Any other discussion other than Raven's a rock star? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Howie?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Marchetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Judge Beeler, I'm not qualified to give Raven a coin from the county, so I'd like to present it to you, to have you present it to her. And if there's any pictures, I gotta put my hat on so everybody will recognize. Don't nobody recognize me without my hat.
That's right. We'd say, "Who's this?"
Who is this guy? Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations, Raven.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Roseanne, if I have to meet my demise and meet Mr. Wagner back there facing up in a coffin, I hope you can read my obituary. I'd rather have you than Morgan Freeman.
I'd be happy to.
No, please, I don't wanna do, no. All right, we have another resolution. R-083-24.
I can read that.
Thank you.
Yes, please do.
So, R-083-24, resolution recognizing June as reunification month. Whereas all children need the love, care, and security and stability of a family unit, including parents, siblings, grandparents, and other extended family members to provide a solid foundation for personal growth, development, and maturity. Whereas reunification with families the preferred outcome for children removed from their homes and placed in foster care. Whereas for most of the children in foster care, reunification with the family is the best option for permanent and loving home. Whereas safe reunification takes work, commitment, investment of time and resources by parents, family members, social workers, foster parents, service providers, attorneys, courts, and the community. Whereas National Reunification Month has been observed every June since 2010 to celebrate families and communities coming together to acknowledge the hard work to safely reunify a family and to raise awareness about the importance of family reunification to children in foster care. And whereas during the National Reunification Month this year, we recognize the vital role that families, case management teams, treatment courts, judges, attorneys, and communities play in promoting the safe and stable reunification of families who have been separated. Now therefore, be it resolved that Cass County Board of Commissioners recognizes and designates June as a reunification month in Cass County. Adopted this day, 6th of June, 2024. And I move that we approve that motion.
Second.
And motion on the floor in support. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Howie?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Marchetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Wayland?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Item K, Vice Chair Barrera. There are no presentations.
All right, so I move that the above-listed items be voted on at one time by roll call vote and be considered as a consent agenda by the Board of Commissioners.
Support.
Motion on the floor in support. Any discussion on those? Hearing none. Another roll call, please.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Howie?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Marchetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yep. All right. Commissioner Reports, District One. You have anything, Ron?
Just a huge thanks to, thank you to Bob Thompson and the guys at the Road Commission as well as Ed and Dot and Van Buren County Road Commission. They did a fantastic job with the hurry up cleanup in Twin Lakes. Really appreciate all your help, Bob. And the numbers we allocated the money for, they rolled up quite quickly and were removed, so they were, are utilized pretty well.
Nice. Commissioner Lawrence?
I'd just like to reiterate what Commissioner Wayland said. I really do appreciate the efforts that was put in for at least three or four days there. There was a lot of stuff going on around Twin Lakes. Appreciate that. Appreciate Mr. Wayland's and Mr. Commissioner Jones. They were there, I think, almost, were you there for three or four days? Something like that.
Yep.
I even got a piece of pizza from them, so...
Yeah, we passed out pizza and water and, yeah.
I wanna express my appreciation and thanks to them as well.
Thank you.
It's a big help that there were several people that talked about that, so it was a big help.
Well, we live here too. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Locke?
I'll take this time.
All right. I'm gonna skip me. I've ran my mouth enough today. Commissioner Howie?
Nothing to discuss.
Commissioner Barrera?
Not much other than the EDC attended to meet last month. Unfortunately, we did not have enough members, so we did not have a quorum. It's very unfortunate since the committee only meets every other month, but we do have some plans in place to kind of revitalize the committee and hopefully get it back on its feet. I think it's a, it's great efforts that we're putting forward on it and I hope to get it to a point where we can meet every month and start seriously making some progress there.
All right. Commissioner Marchetti?
Okay, from my district, the Memorial Day Parade and Festival were big successes in spite of the rain. Plans are still moving forward on the Fall Festival and Art Fair on September 21st, where we have booths and food trucks and things for kids to do. On May 8th, Human Services Coordinating Council met at the District Library and we had a presentation from Deborah Hatworth, and she is our Director of Services for DASIS, which is Domestic Abuse and Sexual Assault Services. I attended NYSERI Transportation Study on May 28th. And again, I'll remind you that the US 12 from the Village of Edwardsburg to Union will be resurfaced. Planning begins in 2025 and work will begin in 2026. This summer, this is important, all roads in Cass will be given a Pacer rating. Pacer stands for Pavement, Service, Evaluation, and Rating. A grant was received to perform the rating and it will be done on all legal roads in the county. The final leg of the Gumwood-Redfield Roundabout will be completed by this November. The County Planning Commission met May 29th. We reviewed the master plan survey and that will be going out to the public mid-June. The public open house is set for July 24th and is gonna be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Road Commission. All are invited and encouraged to attend. And I would like to thank Bob Thompson for the use of the Road Commission for that. Also, I attended the victim rights from event that Prosecutor Fitz had. Judge Carol Beeler, Law Day, Sheriff Fritter Banky, the Shane Britton Memorial Service, and Manny De La Rosa, the tabletop exercise, which was very timely because we just had the tornado, along with our chairperson and Sam and Joyce. We all four of us attended that. And I would like to say this, even though she's not here tonight, Monica McMichael, our clerk, she has been busy and on top of everything else, she's doing election inspector training. So, she's been really busy. And more important than anything, free fishing weekend this weekend.
Yeah, I'm taking advantage of that for veterans fishing trip. I'm going to catch some walleye.
Oh. My favorite.
You've got some in your own lake. Commissioner Lee?
Well, who doesn't wanna follow Roseanne? Like I do every time. I'm just like, all right, she covers them all. I will say this, though, that my heart does go out to that family, the guy that was killed down there on 12. I was actually driving through when emergency services were responding. It was a horrible thing, so I just wanna make that known.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Matt, you're up. You got 30 seconds.
I'll try to keep it short. Lot of work going on next door. There, the, the project is moving along very well. If you haven't seen, the doors, the entry system off of Broadway just got installed this week. Looks very nice. On the interior, there's a lot of work going on with painting, trim, things like that. So, everything is moving on schedule. And we, right now, look to be opening roughly sometime in early to mid-October. So, everything is on track.
Interrupt you right there?
Yeah.
One of the public commenters said that, that money there that we put in that courthouse should have been put elsewhere, but correct me if I'm wrong, we couldn't have put that at the Sheriff Department, the Prosecutor's Office, Clerk, Treasurer. We couldn't put that nowhere other than what we did or we were gonna send that back to the state, right?
It was part of the ARPA funding.
ARPA funding.
So, there were some, there were some restrictions on what you could do with it.
Prevented us from giving it to certain things, so that's why we put it there instead of...
Yeah, but I think part of the justification with that, too, is that that was a use of the funds where it wasn't using fund balance from the county.
Right.
In that regard.
Right. That would have cost us more money and taken it from other places.
Or bonds, things like that.
Just wanted to clarify that. Please continue.
Fiscal year 25 budget planning is underway. I think we've facilitated meetings with almost all of our offices and departments as I think there's maybe one or two left. I wanted to, I guess, give a quick update. We're planning to approach it a little differently. We talked about a workshop, I think, at the last meeting. The idea is to continue with that, but we're gonna kind of circle back to a process we've used several years ago where I think we're gonna kind of break it up into parts. So, we'll have a workshop day and then we'll have offices and departments kind of come in and we'll focus on kind of that section of the budget at that time. So, give a little more interactive experience with the board and that officer department and be able to kind of go through it piece by piece instead of kind of looking at, you know, the whole thing at once and saying, "Where do we start?"
Before or after the primary?
It would probably be sometime around the middle to end of July would be my guess in terms of the discussion.
Thank, thank you.
And then the last thing I guess I'll touch on real quick is we have been, some of you may have seen a notification from our agenda system last week, Friday, as we were working to test that. We're working on the final steps here of working through the new agenda system we're gonna have. It'll largely look similar to what people have seen before, but I think it'll be much better for the public, lot easier to interact with in terms of agenda creation and things like that. Minutes will also work through that system as well, too. So, we've got a little bit of time left to kind of finalize what that, how all that works, but we are in the process of getting it ready to go right now.
I think we oughta wait till, going back to that one workshop, remember the end of July, we have the fair last week of July, so we might...
Of course, we'll work with, with the board to make sure we schedule it in a fashion like that works quality.
We might wanna wait till after the fair. Not in political reason or, or the primary, but in reality for the whole community, wait till after the fair. But that ain't my only, my sole decision. I guess we'll talk about that later as a board. All right, Matt, thank you. Any questions for our administrator? Yes, ma'am.
A very quick question. Health insurance, did you get those numbers and did our health insurance go up?
Health insurance will be increasing. And I believe the, the average increase across all the plans was approximately 10.1%. It's a pretty large increase.
It is.
We're looking to bring this, I believe would be the committee of the whole, PA 152. So, Public Act 152 provides a couple different options in terms of an 80/20 sort of a split for healthcare costs. There's a hard cap option and then there's options to kind of exempt, you know, a governing body from those as well. We'll be bringing that and the information on the insurance original to the next committee of the whole for everybody to look at. We may be looking at some, some different options that we may not have considered in prior years that, that may actually create some opportunities for employees to really look at the different plans in a way that we haven't before. You know, we'll, we'll talk more when we get there.
Okay.
And another question related to the health insurance. Would there be an option for people to opt out of it or is, will it be mandatory?
I think you can always opt out.
Yeah.
You actually get a cash stipend if you don't take the whole insurance.
Right.
So, I mean, it's absolutely...
Yeah. I'm sorry to cut you off, Roseanne.
There may be options for things like more high deductible plans that people could utilize HSAs and have a much, much lower cost, too. So, I mean, I think this year more than others, there'll be a lot of opportunity for employees to really look and figure out what works best for me.
I'm just heading off future questions.
I get it.
Yes, okay. Yes, sir.
Has Dave Reeve taken a good look at the construction over there?
He's, he's been through a couple different times now. And I think we are trying to, you know, to work through with our current team as much as we can to make sure that that...
Could we get him to give us a report on how that construction is going, how he thinks that construction is going?
I can see what I can do.
Okay.
Any other questions for our administrator? All right. County Partner Zach from Market One, formerly Marcus Van Buren.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Reports there. As Commissioner Barrera noted, we attempted to have a meeting last month and what you're getting here is the report that we were going to present at that particular meeting. So, high level here, 'cause I think we have five minutes. Is that correct, Matt?
Yeah, you did. I'm the one asked, not him.
Oh, oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'll wait for the bell. So, what we have here on page three, you'll see that we have a pipeline of projects. Part of economic development is, is when we are meeting with companies throughout Cass and Van Buren Counties. A lot of times we discover that some of the companies have some different challenges, issues, or plans to grow and need some support in that area to help kind of navigate through the state or even local government. So, as we're doing that, we'll take notice of some of the projects we're working. You'll see on that page that we have three projects right now. Could result in 51 new jobs in the county and, but we'd be retaining 332 jobs. This would be a wage impact of 1.8 million and a capital investment of about 13 million. So, we're talking about increasing revenue in the county. This is one way we do it, is we have expansions. The other way we do is attractions of new businesses to increase tax, tax revenue in the county. Potential economic impact would be almost 15 million in this particular case. We then go into the report. We have like historic projects we've worked and supported. And then on page five of this particular report, we have the community development part of it. And this is something fairly new. We got into a couple of years back because we saw all the money that was gonna be coming online. We talked about ARPA, other things. And we wanted to make sure that Cass and Van Buren Counties was not being left behind for Detroit, Grand Rapids, Lansing, the bigger communities who are better and well-funded to be able to pull some of this money down. So, we have, we particularly put together this report as part of that effort. And until approved up to this point, if you just, if you take out the Robin Grant we did with Midwest Energy Communications, it's about $3 million that we are working with Cass County on right now that we brought in. So, in support of a lot of partners. So, again, as if you're at my event last night, you're at, we talked about you can't do it in isolation. There's a lot of people who work together and make these things happen. We're one piece of it. Local municipal governments, one piece of it. Treasurers like Hope Anderson are part of that effort, too. So, everyone works together to support these efforts. We go into the report. We talked a little bit about, if you keep going throughout our report, we talked a little about some of the work we did in the first quarter of the year. Again, keep in mind, this was a May meeting and we were reporting on the previous quarter. We talked a little bit about the work we did there and part of that efforts. I think one thing I'll just close with since, uh, Mr. Chairman, you, you're limited time here, is that, well, I'll talk about economic development from a high level here. And this is one of the things that we talked about at the meeting, even though it was, didn't have quorum, is that we, we need to maximize how many primary employers we're bringing into the county. Primary employers, folks that make a product or service sell it outside the county, bring the capital back into the community, distribute in wages, taxes, and services to what we call secondary businesses. And they're, they're not secondary in function and importance, but secondary in how capital functions. So, they take the existing dollars in the community turnover. Think about your coffee shops, your grocery store, some, stuff like that. But those secondary companies are important to creating community so that we can attract talent in and attract businesses in. I can assure you, when HEDRO was taking a look, they saw the work that Cassopolis was doing and they commented many times on how well the community was coming together right here. So, that was one of the decisions they made. And by the way, my understanding is that HEDRO is gonna be paying five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in property taxes. So, if we want to solve some of our budget issues, more primary employment is one of the best ways of doing that. So, that's what we work on, developing sites. That's some of our goals as we're working, developing more industrial sites so we can attract more companies into the area. And we continue to, this week I testified, representing Cass and Van Buren Counties at a house committee and I testified on the importance of making sure we're not just giving money to the bigger communities or to big projects, that some of this money is also coming into place-making and housing. Our company presidents are telling us, and you know this commissioner, they're telling us over and over again, we need housing for our, for our employees. If they don't live here, they're gonna live somewhere else and they're spending their money somewhere else. So, that's all, all the things we're working on right now is addressing some of those issues. In this particular report, we also get into a business development update. We talk about some more of what I call the transactional pieces, everyday stuff we do. Um, submitting projects to, to RFPs from the state, um, meeting with different folks. Here recently I met with, you might be hearing about data centers. I have data centers calling me quite often, people looking for sites for it. I give them the tours, have them go through DeWajac and Cassopolis. We talk about other potential sites. That's part of it. And these data centers that you saw recently, one billion dollars going into LaPorte, Indiana was one of the headlines recently. Talk about one of the ways you can solve some of your budget crisis, if we land a data center, that's a lot of tax revenue coming into Cass County. I can assure you that. Um, and they don't beat your roads up, by the way, so Bob Thompson wouldn't have to pack a lot of potholes then. Community development update, we talked a little bit about what we're doing in that effort also. It's from the meetings we're having with communities. Keep in mind, a lot of our communities are just frankly underfunded and they need us as an extension of their team to help with the grant effort. And that's what we are as an extension of the team for our communities. We're an extension of the team for our businesses, helping them navigate the bureaucracy. And that's part of what we're doing also in this effort. And we have some of the, you'll see some of the visits, uh, pictures from Edwardsburg to Cassopolis and Lawton and all over the place, we're meeting with businesses. And we have some of the pictures in here from those things as well. So, with that, I'll, uh, can you any questions?
Any questions? Yeah.
I just want to say, you know, I did attend that meeting or the event last night. I want to say it's, uh, it was a great event, very well attended. Same thing I'm returning to me with, uh, some of the other people in the community, some of the business owners, our neighboring county commissioners, a great networking experience, amazing venue. You guys have done a great job with that. In a previous conversation, Zach, we talked about how important it is to have representation in our county for economic development. And in that case, you kind of touched on it a little bit. So, when there's people that are looking and asking questions about our county, you're the one that's getting the call, right? And that's, that's important. They, they know not who to go to and you have the resources and connections that, that allow us to be able to navigate those calls and make sure that we're not missing opportunities that we would likely probably miss otherwise.
Uh, we've developed relationships with commercial realtors and that's a lot, lot of who calls us actually. It's commercial realtors. And they, over the years, they got to know me. Been in this job almost eight years now and they, through projects and other things, they just know. Hey, they can give me a call on my cell phone. Hey, we're looking, we're looking for twenty acres with this, this, and this. And it's like, yep, I've got three communities that meet that criteria. Let's go look at them. And that's how that kind of works. And so, that's developing the relationships with these site selectors and commercial realtors and folks like that are, it's an important part because, uh, through Cass and Van Buren, we have fifty-two units of government. Over the Indiana border, you generally are dealing with the city and the county, that's it. So, they're not going to call every last municipality and set up an appointment. We represent all fifty-two units of government. And I can assure you, recently when I was meeting with these sites or these data center folks on a Hart, on a site in Hartford, I said, oh, by the way, I have some sites in Cassopolis and DeWajac that you might want to take a look at too. And guess what? These two days later said, hey, can we go take a look at them? And we did. We met with Kevin Anderson, we met with Emily Legrow and met with some folks and looked, looked at their site. So, it's important that you, it's, to have that.
Let me interrupt you there, Zach. Just to clarify for some people in the audience and on the internet that are listening. When you say just that right there, that, you know, they're looking for certain criteria and you're like, oh, I have three sites in Cassopolis, just for clarif, I know the answer.
Yeah.
You're not, you don't have the three sites. You have a listing of the three sites, but those people still have to come to the Emily Legrows, the city managers, the village managers, the township managers, before you all have zero control of that. It's up to those entities whether or not they proceed from there.
Yeah, absolutely. It's part of the partnership is that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm the marketing arm and then I have the partners who have the knowledge that, you know, what's allowed here. You know, what are the site uses here locally? And that's when I bring them in.
What's zoning?
What's the zoning, exactly. And frankly, we have some places right now that the zoning hasn't been updated in thirty years. And guess what? Data centers are not on the zoning. So, they have to go back to local unit of government and say, can you do an amendment to, to your ordinances to allow for it?
And if they don't, then they can't have the data centers there.
That's exactly right.
Just clarification.
And so, part of what we do also is educate, like, hey, by the way, we have people looking at your place. You need to get your ordinance up to date if you want one of these data centers. Who, again, billion dollars, these enterprise data centers, and they're not going away, by the way. AI is increasing, as much as I don't like it, it's increasing. And, uh, I don't know if you bought a new phone, but the megapixels aren't going down and everything's being stored in the cloud. So, data centers are not going away. And, uh, the Midwest, upper Midwest is a really key place because it's cooler weather, so it's cost less to actually cool all the little computers inside of these places. So, Microsoft, you know, Google, all these places are looking for them right now.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Alright, man.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Gotta go to a coach softball game between Decatur and then we got the Cassopolis Rangers in town tonight, so.
Oh, boy. Go, go Cass!
Go Raiders!
You gotta go.
I'll stay, I'll stay near.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's all fun, fun prodding. Alright, more county partners. Kari? Thank you. But you are doing a good job anyway. I got your report and Kari is doing a tremendous job for our county veterans. Corey?
I'm Kari and so I came up.
Yeah, come on up.
I know that I said I wasn't gonna stay, uh, at the beginning, but we kind of reassessed and looked at July, said fourth of July week time period and it changes, maybe we better come now. Uh, why don't you come up here Tracy? Um, at first, I'm Corey Bygus, I'm with the Cass County Conservation District and this is Tracy Weesaugh. Uh, she's our new soil erosion and sediment control administrator. I'm gonna give her a minute to talk. Uh, but I did want to say, uh, first, kudos to Savage Bean here in Cassopolis. Uh, they've been putting out a lot of activities and they invited us to participate in their chainsaws and coffee event, uh, on Saturday. And we gave away several of the leftover trees from our tree sale, uh, that, that did go pretty well, but we ended up with some leftovers. And so, we were able to participate in that and reach out a lot of people and, and those kind of events are important, um, to us. We are trying to improve our outreach. We have the Fourth Friday Conservation Conversations Program scheduled again. We had postponed them for a bit. That's at the COA Fourth Friday, eleven to one. We'll have the table up with a sign, you know, conservationist is in. So, you can come and talk to us, ask us questions. We'll have different topics and presenters, uh, to be there, uh, each month. And, uh, the taste of confor, conservation is being put on by NRCS and our office, mainly the NRCS. We'll be there to talk about conservation assistance available for farming and forest operations. Uh, it's important that folks who are not getting assistance right now realize they need to come ask. They're the ones that need to come ask NRCS for assistance. What, what programs might they have available? What programs might they have for historically underserved audiences? And they are definitely doing a lot of work in our office, trying to get funds, the federal farm bill funds here in Cass. So, let people know to come and ask questions at an event like this. This one's June eighteen from ten to twelve. And that's probably all I should say, 'cause I want to give you that.
Well, my name's Tracy Weesaugh. I think she said my name already. So, I am going into my, uh, third month working for the Conservation District. It is very exciting. I love it. And it's actually something that I've always had a passion to do. Um, kind of something I did on the sidelines, uh, protect water. And, uh, anyway, yeah, I really love working for the district and I look forward to seeing everybody again soon.
Thank you. Well, before you, before you sit down, I'll recognize you a little bit further. I, uh, my other job, I'm code enforcement officer and we'll leave the rest anonymous. I had a, we had a pretty significant issue with a person burying trash and burning things in a pit and polluting our waters and it was really significant. I went to their office and they got on it like right away, like right away. Then Corey, one of my neighbors, had a swath of land that he couldn't plant on that was about as big as this thing here from some old outdated law. And if he planted on it, he's gonna get like thousands and thousands of dollar fine. Took it to Corey, immediately they got on it. This year, he's got corn and soybeans planted there, so I appreciate you guys' efforts. You guys do a good job. You were a good hire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else we got for county partners? Bob Thompson. How could I, how dare I forget the most important guy?
It's always good to be in front of this group and we appreciate your efforts and the support that we have ongoing. Without saying, but I want to say it anyway, thank you all. Um, just a quick update, uh, we've had questions about roadside mowing. There's three units, so I think we're a little over half done. Uh, probably another week and a half, that should be all done. Um, the weather obviously has lent itself to tremendous growth, excuse me, tremendous growth in the weed department. And so, uh, uh, we started earlier than last year, but, uh, it takes time. Thousand fifteen miles times two, it's a lot of mowing. Um, dust control will start the seventeenth. We always get asked questions about that because it's always dusty before we do it. But I've explained to you guys the parameters and restrictions and why we have to wait until we do it. Usually mid-June, third week of June, pretty normal. Uh, paving and gravel contracts are well underway. Uh, we did finally take delivery of the new paver that was ordered over two years ago. Unbelievable. Um, out of curiosity, I, I went back and I looked. Um, interestingly enough, our paver replacement has been on a twenty-year cycle, almost to the year. Starting ninety-three, the paver cost ninety-six thousand. Uh, oh-four, it was replaced, two hundred and forty-two thousand. And the paver we just took delivery of, uh, six hundred and forty thousand. So, um, there's a large investment, obviously, in our paving program. Um, with the support of this board over the years and various, uh, contributions along the way, uh, there has been a significant investment in the paving program for this county. We'd like to think comparatively speaking, it shows. All our roads aren't great, still takes money to pave. We save money every year because of that program versus our neighboring counties that don't have that, uh, luxury to do it themselves. The other thing I wanted to mention, and, and I, I don't know if the, the lady is here tonight. Um, I'm told she would like to speak about the, um, intersection of, uh, Polk Hagan and Daley. Um, I hope she does. Um, that's something that, um, I hope people realize, you know, we don't just take a look at those things because there's an accident. It's an ongoing review data. We constantly, um, go over that, analyze it, try to determine if there are things we can do to enhance an intersection, make it safer. That never stops. Um, so, what, what doesn't occur, I think, regularly is the response to what was a horrific accident here a couple of weeks ago. Really bad. Uh, one person, eighty percent, uh, burns over their body. Not good at all. Other people that were involved in that accident, uh, there were four others, very minor injuries, thank goodness. But I, I like to put things in perspective, which I think is important. It's not always done, uh, as we react to those kinds of accidents that grab everyone's attention. Uh, that particular intersection is our worst intersection. I sure, I sure dated with you not that long ago. Um, there are four thousand, uh, we call them movements, uh, through that intersection daily. Now, if you do the math, um, that's a million four hundred and forty thousand vehicles going through that intersection a year. Uh, we, we use ten-year data, uh, blocks. So, in ten years, there would have been fourteen million four hundred thousand vehicles pass through that intersection. In the last ten years, from fourteen to twenty-three, there were fifty-seven accidents. Now, one accident is too many, okay? And I don't mean to make, make light of any accident that has occurred at that intersection or anywhere in this county. But perspective is important. Uh, with limited resources, you have to keep perspective, uh, in check and look at what's really happening. And so, when we look at those numbers, we're delighted that there were only fifty-seven accidents with ten million plus, uh, movements through that intersection. It's incredible. Forty-four of them, uh, fall under the category, uh, of things that there are possible changes that we could make to, to lower that number from forty-four. And that's the things that we constantly are looking at. We probably are going to do some of the things that we've already done at Marcellus and Decatur. That was the last hot intersection for a while. Knock on wood, that's calmed down a little bit. It goes in cycles. We're looking, of course, at Polk Hagan and others. I can tell you that out of the, um, forty-four, thirty of those, the people stopped and then pulled out in front of traffic. Most people think that they're running the stop sign and that's the problem. It is not. They're stopping, then they're pulling out in front of ongoing traffic. And so, that's a difficult thing to try to make better. And then, of course, in that setting, the first thing we hear is, well, it's that hill to the west. It's that hill to the west, that's what's doing it. And I'm sure it doesn't help. Again, today, Joe, our engineer, and I, we did the site, you know, the measurements, the site distances, the stopping distances. There's adequate time if you crest the hill and someone is sitting in the middle of Polk Hagan Road. There's adequate time to stop before you hit them, if you're going sixty miles an hour. Not everybody comes over that hill at sixty miles an hour, folks. I've shared with you before, there are two factors that I believe contribute to the increase in accidents, uh, today. One is speed. People are driving faster than they've ever driven before. And two, they're distracted. By whatever means of distraction, it doesn't matter. If you're distracted, you're distracted. And if you're going too fast, those two things don't lead to good outcomes. It's hard to put things in place, such as signage and any kind of warnings, that can overcome those two factors. So, we'll continue to look at these things. We'll continue to try to make it as safe as we can, as always. And, uh, we always welcome, uh, those questions, comments, suggestions from our public. We listen, we take it to heart and we're serious about this and we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Bob.
Um, as the board chair for the Cass County Department of Health and Human Services, um, I also have the opportunity to see the medical care facility. I'm pleased to report substantial progress and achievements in the recent months. Since my appointment last October, we have streamlined our leadership structure to enhance efficiency. We eliminated the position of chief executive officer as its duties are more effectively managed by our licensed administrator, aligning us with more common practices and... aligning us with more common practices in similar institutions. I would like to express my profound appreciation for Linda Duchan, who is our interim administrator. Linda has shown exceptional leadership and initiative, driving significant improvements at our facility. Although Linda's tenure with us is temporary, her impact will definitely be long-lasting. Under Linda's guidance, she has worked very closely with our inter-agency agreement and IT. Um, often Linda will tell you that this year, they have made quantum leaps in technology, from acquisition of new equipment, fully digitizing policies and procedures, and utilizing, um, previously underused things such as Teams and SharePoint. Um, Linda and I can't say enough about the partnership with the county for IT services, um, and a lot of this work wouldn't have been done with, without the help of them. Um, this past winter, our facility was severely tested by concurrent outbreaks of COVID and the flu affecting both residents and staff. I cannot praise enough the extraordinary dedication of our staff, who worked not only extra hours under challenging conditions, but also endured a continued safety and care for our residents. Their commitment is, is just unheard of. One final thing is Linda is an interim. Um, we are looking for a long-term administrator over at the medical care facility. Um, the board has spent a lot of time, um, talking with each other on what we're looking for and, and how to go about this process. Um, I just recently was working on a new advertisement that we are hoping to see out very soon, um, to try and find that perfect fit over, over there. Um, we appreciate Linda and wish we could keep her. She's from several hours away. Um, but we are looking, um, to have a really nice transition, hopefully, with bringing a new administrator on and, and seeing her on her way. So I just wanted to come, um, with the administrator being interim. I thought it was important that you guys have some type of update on the medical care facility. I know there's been a lot of, um, different things being said out there, so I just wanted to offer myself a little bit of update on what has gone on over there, and if you guys have any questions at all at any time, um, you all know how to, to reach me too, so. Any questions, or?
Any other county partners? Thanks, Joe. Chair. Chair to chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to move that we have a short recess, five minutes.
Done. Well, I waited. All right, we're gonna go to elected officials. I'm gonna call Vic up first.
I actually do have things to talk about other than, uh, the previous topic.
All right.
Couple of things I just wanted to mention, and one actually is a little bit related, but, uh, just two items. One, um, it is kind of interesting how, you know, over time, you, you get to know your community, and you get to know the people in it and so forth, and, uh, you, you just, you just heard, uh, Tracy Weesaw speaking, obviously, uh, you know, very, very accomplished individual, doing some good things here for the county and so forth, too. And I, I, I chatted with her a little bit to make sure she's okay that I bring this up. But, uh, what you may not know about Tracy is that a few years ago, her brother, Fabian Weesaw, was brutally gunned down in the city of Duwajak. Excuse me, somebody was near the Shell Station, shooting down with an AK-47 into a crowd of people, and tragically, her brother was one of the bystanders there who, uh, uh, took one of the projectiles and was killed. Uh, and the reason, one of the reasons I wanted to bring that up as well is that, uh, Tracy's involvement in that case, as far as, uh, as far as working with my office. Uh, in that situation, now, you've met with her a number of times, her and other family members, uh, ultimately commended in a conviction of the, of the perpetrator, and he was convicted of second-degree murder, received forty-six years in prison. And I, I remember the sentencing, and I, I've, I've spoken to this with a number of people outside of Tracy's presence and so forth and others, because it was just, just true. I've been doing this for over forty years, and I, it's been a long time, maybe I've heard someone better, but her and her family, the, the allocution that they gave at the time of that sentencing, excuse me, on behalf of their brother Fabian, who was beloved in the Polk Hagan tribe and, and with, uh, with their family and so forth, uh, it, it was just second to none. Uh, and, and the reason why it was so impressive was the fact that Tracy and her family members, they didn't talk of anger and vengeance and hatred. Um, they wanted accountability, uh, just like the thief on the cross who died the night that he was given forgiveness, still died. What they talked about was forgiveness, and they talked about grace, and again, interspersed again certainly with accountability for what he had done to their brother. But again, it was one of the most noble statements that I ever heard at a sentencing by a family member. And again, I, I'm not just saying that because Tracy is here today. I've said that many times to other groups as well. So Tracy, you can be proud of how you and your family represented your brother, so.
All right, thanks, Vic.
Yep, and the other one, just final thing I just want to say real quickly is again, too, I, and I'll just be very brief on this. I just, uh, I just expressed my proud, my pride of, of my staff as well, just, uh, you know, that I, I, I couldn't ask for a better staff. I'm just proud of what they did this evening, uh, I think spoke eloquently, and I appreciate the fact that they, they were here this evening. Thank you.
Sheriff. If he wants to. It never ends, does it?
Just so you know, I've been keeping a count. We've been under the limit for the fire marshal today, so just to let you know, we keep coming in and out today. Few things, uh, we started the jail security project today, or that, today, this week, and we've replaced, uh, most of the cameras in the building and added the cameras that are coming in. So the project that you approved is moving forward. We're excited about that. Next week, there'll be a pause, and it'll start on the door security system, but we're hoping to have the new cameras up and functioning by tomorrow. Figures crossed, so I appreciate that. I know Bob talked about a crash at Polk Hagan and Daley. I, I'm anticipating bringing, uh, you guys, uh, a harrows of ward for our, our deputies that were there that night. We're still looking for a lady who stopped and helped three people, so if you've heard anybody who stopped and helped, please let us know. Uh, the three girls that were in the other car that escaped injury, um, major injury, uh, were helped by, uh, a, a Good Samaritan who then left the scene. So, uh, we're excited to try to find that person as well. One other project, defense project we reported on. You're voting on a budget, a budget amendment to get that going, uh, the fence project, uh, animal control. So those are a few projects that we have hanging out there, and, um, I think that's all I got.
Thanks, Sheriff. Treasure Anderson, I seen her earlier.
She's here.
Hiding behind the podium.
I'm Hope Anderson. I am the county treasurer, but I'm gonna speak today on, um, a, a land bank project. It is the MyHope program, not named after me, but, um, it's a great program. It actually stands for the Michigan Housing Opportunities Promoting Energy Efficiency. Now that we are about fifty percent done with the program, I thought I would give you an update on what are we doing and where are we doing it. As you know, the city of Duwajak received funding in this program, and the village of Cass received funding. So the funding that the Cass County Land Bank Authority received covers the rest of the county. So where are these houses that were doing this work? We completed ten, each household that was approved, qualified, or sorry, each homeowner that was qualified and approved could receive up to twenty-five thousand dollars in energy efficiency upgrades to their homes. And with the funding that we received, we are currently at thirty-four homes across the county. Where are these houses? There are three in Antua Township, six in Calvin Township, two in Howard Township, three in the village of Vandelia, four in Jefferson Township, two in Polk Hagan Township, three in La Grange Township, one in Porter Township, two in the village of Marcellus, two in Wayne Township, two in Mars, Mason Township, three in Milton Township, and one in Silver Creek Township. So I think we've done a pretty good job spreading this wealth across the county. What kind of work are we doing? We're doing work, we, we're doing seventeen furnaces. Some of these people didn't have furnaces that even worked. So seventeen new furnaces, uh, or, and/or air conditioning units, six water heaters, thirteen new roofs, fifteen new appliances, fifteen hall home insulation replacement, thirteen replacement of, of multiple windows or doors in the home, and two complete electrical upgrades. So, um, and, and with, uh, every contractor that we use is a local contractor. So we're also able to keep all that funding here, um, in our local economy. So I wanted to kind of give you an update. We've completed ten homes. The rest of them are at some stage of completion. We'll probably have the whole thing done in, within the next eight to ten months. Um, it's good work. I want to specifically give a special thanks to my staff, who's taken on this extra work. Paulette Johnson, Tracy Haskin, and Heather Brown, they're application processors. That means they're actually walking these homeowners through the, the whole application process and all the way through their renovation, scheduling audits, scheduling contractors out there, getting contracts signed, following up to make sure the works, make sure the work's done. Um, a final audit to make sure that we have final photos that the work was completed. All of this is necessary, because we're building files that we have to submit to MISTHA in order to get reimbursed. So my staff has done an amazing job. I do want to, and if you, if you have the opportunity to thank them, they have taken on some, a lot of additional work, but it's good work, and we, we do have that vision to carry out this, 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 uh, task for the county. Um, that's all I wanted to give an update on today, unless anyone had any questions about the MyHope program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Oh, can we get a list of the addresses and townships?
Sure. Yep, sure.
Did Monica give you anything that she want to, okay? Jeff Van Bell, the drain commissioner here. It's raining somewhere. Judge Beeler.
Thank you. Thank you for the reunification month resolution. I really appreciate that. Just a reminder, I know I told you before, but if you're on the fence, please come to our reunification day on June fourteenth from four to six P.M. out at Dodd Park. It's gonna be a really nice event. Um, you know, when our treasurer just gave her report, she recognized her staff, but we really, you know, are fortunate to have all the work she's doing with the land bank and all over the county. Like, sometimes, you know, projects get done in one part of the county, but she's making sure stuff is going on in all of our county, and so we're really fortunate for that. We did ballot review today. Um, you know, the election commission works on that to review all the ballots, and they were all perfect, so that was awesome. So, you know, Monica and her office worked really hard. So, you know, Monica and her office worked really hard on that, and so Hope and I and Monica were reviewing ballots this afternoon. And, um, I just wanted to, um, also give you an update that, um, we're still working to secure some funding for some booths in the jail, working with the sheriff, because they're awesome to work with too. Making sure that we can get treatment into people in the jail, and also those booths could then be used also for attorneys to meet with people if they weren't in use, so they can serve dual purposes, which is also awesome. And awesome that we're trying to get it paid through our co-sub grant. So that's federal dollars that, um, we would be able to utilize, which help our citizens in Cass County, which is awesome. Also, I just wanted to give a shout out to our village manager in Cassopolis, Emily LaGro, because I have been to four events over the last couple of weeks where people have been telling me all of the different projects her and her team have been working on. And, um, you know, I live in Cassopolis, not the village, but in Cassopolis. And, you know, just the changes that have occurred over, you know, the last five years in terms of our community, the things that are happening in our community. And I'm not saying that we can just thank one person for that, she has an excellent team and there are a lot of people working with her, but her leadership has been tremendous and stupendous. And so I just want to give her a shout out because she's a great partner with us too on different things. And we're trying to work with her, um, on something that our security committee at the law courts has been working on for a long time to get something done as far as an ordinance for signage, so that we don't have people videotaping our staff when they're trying to do work, and when they're trying to carry out their duties for the citizens. And so she's gonna partner with us on that as well. And then finally, I just wanted to say, because, you know, I don't want my comments earlier to be misconstrued, I appreciate our prosecutors and all the staff that's here from their office tonight very much. And I know that it might not seem that way when I make the comments that I do, I appreciate all of our staff. And, you know, I heard things being said about how astounded people are about how fortunate we are, we are so fortunate. Because I find people who give and give and give of their time, and then some, people completing courses like Raven Baikman, all those hours, I mean, you know, that's some personal time, it's not just, you know, eight to five or something. And I'm not saying she's, you know, unique, we have so many people in all of our different areas, and that's because of your leadership in your different areas, and it's all stupendous. So, I just hope that we'll continue to celebrate all that, because sometimes, like tonight, it feels like, oh, it's us against them or something, and it's not. We all work so well together, and that's a really wonderful thing, because I have benchmate, or not benchmates, judges that I know in other counties, that everybody's fighting all the time, and they are really nasty and mean to one another, and we are fortunate here. That we have so many people committed to our citizens and working really hard. So, I just wanted to throw that plug out, because I don't think that's true in every other county around the state of Michigan, so we're lucky.
And the surrounding areas on the news all the time for some drama. What time is that reunification event at?
Four to six P.M. at Dodd Park.
Four to six P.M.
On Friday, June fourteenth.
Four to six P.M. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Alright. Unfinished business, that motion, M zero nine eight dash twenty-four, motion to approve conflict of interest policy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have motion on the floor in support, we beat that horse to dust, so if we have any more discussion on it.
No, we do not.
Thank you.
Not by me.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business, uh, the first one is M zero nine nine dash twenty-four, is a motion to approve elective official and chief deputy salary policy.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Have motion on the floor in support, any discussion, other than that we changed that wording?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, yeah, I believe we did.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I don't think I had any other calls or concerns from any of the offices, so I think we should be good with that, alright?
Okay, I just want to make sure, there was nobody in the audience too that had any questions, that's okay.
Alright, I was gonna say that, but I was kind of afraid. Thank, thank you for taking something that I was, you know, I'm not afraid of much, but I was kind of worried there. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two, M dash one hundred dash twenty-four, is a motion to adopt the existing Cass class comp pay scale and continue all applicable provisions of the MERS transition plan for all chief deputy positions for fiscal year twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor in support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. County appointments. We have M one oh one dash twenty-four, is a motion to appoint Michael Bowman to the Cass County Planning Commission for a term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
First one move?
Second.
Motion on floor in support, any discussion?
I just wanted to say regarding, uh, this motion and the next motion, I appreciate now the appointments committee, um, putting their applications in, so thank you very much for that.
We will continue to do that.
Yeah.
That was really nice to read those.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next one, M one oh two dash twenty-four, motion to appoint Zach Morris to the Community Corrections Advisory Board to the Workforce Development Position for a Term Expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor in support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
That's a nay, right, alright. Motion passes. That's it. Next one, prosecutor's office, APA one and APA two classification, was previously taken off and put back on before Vic comes up. Do we have any, you, you gotta stay there, you know. Do we have any from the board here? Any comments from the board? Yes sir.
As I had considered this, and when I first became a commissioner, and I saw the kind of wages that these people were making, and I sit there, I was appalled, because I made more money than they did. Two thousand nineteen, I made more money than these prosecutors were making, assistant prosecutors are making. And I sit there and I contemplated on that, now, how can that be? I was a professional, they're professionals, I went out for training just like they did. I was down south, I went as far away as Sweden for training purposes.
Like overseas Sweden?
Yes.
Wow.
And these people are doing the same thing. And the thing that bothers me is, there's no top rate, the, the top rate here hasn't been met yet by some of these people. I was hired in at top rate.
Okay, anything else?
I would like to say something.
Yes ma'am.
I've supported prosecutor's office in the past, you know, when they needed things, and I'm very much in favor of the sheriff's office and the prosecutor's office. What's going on right now though, is it's a difficult situation, because there are some employees that have not gotten increases. Uh, I did go to HR and looked over some paperwork and things in the office there. There is a work comp study that, I attended the meetings where they're going to, um, hire a service to actually do a work comp study. This is nothing out of the ordinary, it's, it's reasonable and customary for, um, businesses and entities to do wage studies. This helps determine if your employees are paid properly. And I, I believe that the last works comp study that was done, things have just gotten out of back, and there were some departments that were disenfranchised. Some got more money than others. And I think we have to be really careful with this, I don't want to get into anything with the Department of Hour and Wage, and I know this is political, and I don't know if you're real subject to that, but I had to deal with it in my private world when I was in human resources. I think everybody deserves to have a raise. I know that there are some people here that are underpaid, but at this point in time, I would like to wait and see what the study comes back as, so that we know exactly where everybody, their compensation should be, so that everybody is treated fair and equal. I, I believe that if we do this, it's, it's gonna disenfranchise other people even more, and I don't want to see that happen. And I'm not saying I don't care about the prosecutor's office, I do, I do. But at this time, if they could just wait with all the other employees till this work comp study is done, I think the outcome will be better.
Anything?
Uh, yes, prosecutor Fitz and I had a conversation earlier today, it was a great conversation, uh, just want to touch on some of the points that you and I talked about, just to make it more public. You know, I, I too think that the wage comp study is an opportunity for us to be able to right the wrongs that, you know, from the past, and be able to have, hold a more fair overview on, on how we want to take care of the situation. That being said, you know, you mentioned that eleven positions have been looked at since the previous comp study, and while that may be the case, I really am encouraged by this board to do the right thing with the wage comp study, and that we see it through, no matter the results, what they might be. And with that, I'm holding out on, on that, to, you know, really be able to kind of put it back on the, on the correct path, so, just want to put that out there.
Anybody else, before I run my mouth? Vic had said, prosecutor Fitz had said earlier that this would impact us four thousand dollars this year, and twelve thousand dollars next year. I don't, I hate to ambush your matter Jen, is that?
I, off the top of my head, do not believe that those numbers are accurate.
It'd be a little bit more than that or less, you think, maybe, or is that an unfair question to ambush you with?
Um, there might be, um, enough this year, I'm not quite sure. Next year, it would definitely be more than that, I mean, just the loan step increases are more than that.
Cost of living adjustments.
Cause it's not just the pay, it's the everything else.
Cost of living as well, this retirement, um, which is also compensation, is going up another percent next year as well. And so, it is definitely more than the number that was given.
Okay. My other comment or question, and I'm gonna ask it, but I, I'm gonna try to ask you all to refrain from a long, long, long explanation. But everybody from your office, or from that office, came up and gave prosecutor Fitz alcalays, like, we came here just for him. Came here just for him, and we, you know, he's a great guy and all that, but to turn around and leave and go to another, another county, that's, don't, you know, are you all gonna bail out on him if we don't wait for the class comp study? You know, he, he's such a good guy, you know, maybe you might want to stick it out, you know? But I, I get it, you know, I'm not bashing anybody, but that seems like kind of contradictory to me, you know, yes sir?
I would note one thing, particularly as it relates to the, the class compensation study, um, the RFP that went out, um, those proposals are due back tomorrow. Uh, we'll be meeting next week with the committee to evaluate those, the plan would be that, um, those proposals would be, a recommendation would come to the next committee, the whole meeting. Now, we haven't seen all of them yet, cause the deadline's tomorrow, so, you know, there's more, but a lot of the organizations that have reached out with questions and things, um, have kind of provided some feedback in terms of a timeline, and, um, a lot of them are looking at roughly four to six months. So it's not, you know, something that's a multi-year sort of thing, I mean, uh, we were even, you know, wondering, was it, was it six to twelve, somewhere in that timeframe, but it looks like a lot of them are thinking it would be a fairly quick turnaround time. So, you know, I think when you take that into account, it is something worth considering. And in that instance, it's, you know, looking at, um, a, a third party, you know, professional organization, that's saying, here's all of the positions that we have, here's where the, the ranking is, is fairly scored. And, um, you know, are the grading factors we're looking at right now the right ones? Should those change? I mean, so, you know, with that on the horizon, you know, it, it is something to be mindful of, that it's not, it's not likely to be, this is a long drawn out sort of a process.
It's like maybe by November and December timeframe, before the first of the year, we'll get for the entire county employees a class comp study, and then we can adjust from there for everybody across the board.
I would think looking at, at, at probably around that late fall, you know, early, you know, into the, around that December timeframe, I mean, some of it's gonna depend on, you know, the scope of what services are there, and which, which firm would be selected. But if it's in that four to six month window, and the decision came in August, you'd probably be looking at that November, December timeframe, roughly speaking.
Alright, Vic, I'll ask you to come up and speak on your proposal here. Well, yes ma'am. Gooch, come on Vic.
I, I got some questions.
Okay.
For Vic or Matt?
For, for Matt.
Okay.
Okay, so Matt, so, okay, you said the committee, so, alright, you've got some RFAs back.
Yeah, we are, we are getting some, I mean, we can't open them yet, but I know we've, we've gotten, I think, four now.
Four, and then tomorrow's a deadline, right?
Tomorrow's a deadline, I would anticipate some additional ones.
Okay, so, and you said the committee is going to open them, when are you gonna open them?
Um, I think, well, I'll have to look at, we had a, a date on the RFP, I think it was.
Oh, you, I remember that, yeah, okay.
Wednesday, something like that, I'll double check, but.
So, um, who's, who's, who's the committee?
Um, the committee is actually all of our elected officials, me, um, commissioner Howie, and then I think we've, um, actually had, um, finance director Rumpfrow, and HR director Daly has been in those meetings with us as well.
Okay, so you're the ones that are going to determine, um?
Oh, I think commissioner Locke as well, right?
Oh, okay, okay, I, I wasn't aware of that, um, I wa, I wasn't aware of who was on the committee, so, um, and, didn't come to this board anyway. At any rate, um, I have another question. Okay, so we're doing budget right now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so are raises put in the budget?
Uh, yes, yeah, raises, um, always entail, and, and this is part of our wage scale now, but those step increases, um, so in the wage scales, um, there's nine steps right now. And, uh, for anybody that's on that wage scale, um, you would move up to that next step come January first. On average, that's gonna be about a three percent increase for that step, um, and there's always cost of living adjustments, um, and that have been completed historically as well. Part of the MERS transition plan, um, was guaranteeing a minimum amount, um, of cost of living adjustments for, I think it's through two thousand twenty-seven. Um, so it's a minimum three percent that would take effect January first as well. So for those folks, depending on where you are in the pay scale, you would see a step increase of, of roughly three percent, and a cost of living adjustment of three percent in addition to that, so about a six percent total increase.
Okay, so six percent total, okay.
Just for clarification, he's speaking non-union only.
Yeah, non-union only, it does, it does fluctuate for the other units.
I, I totally understand that, okay, so you've answered my, he's answered my questions, thank you.
Before I ask Vic to get up again.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's all good.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's all good. Anybody else? From the board? Yes sir.
How much is the class comp study gonna cost the county?
We'll know soon.
We'll know soon, yeah, um, I mean, I, I, I can't necessarily wager a guess until we get a chance to open those, but I mean, you're probably looking at somewhere on the ballpark of, you know, probably a low number would be in the thirty to forty range, up to, you know, sixty or seventy thousand potentially. I mean, it depends on the scope and exactly what we're doing.
And we as a board approved, we as a board though approved that.
You would.
We, yes, yeah, and that's why we're having that, because we as a board requested that. Vic, yeah, well, yes, and we approved it, so, okay.
I mean, that's one thing to keep in mind, is the next committee, the whole, you'll see what the timeline, the proposals are, and have a determination as to how to go forward with that.
Sticker shock, or, oh, that's not bad, right.
And the opening is six seventeen, I believe, from the RFP.
Yep, alright. Victor, please.
Thank you.
Quickly, before, before.
I'm sorry, Vic.
No.
I was about to call point of order.
No.
No, but, certainly don't want to preempt any of the commissioners with their questions, but, uh, and I appreciate a little time here, because this stuff is, this is very important to me, and it's, it's been, like I said, it's been two years that we've been trying to, to have this addressed, uh, and, uh, and so there, there are some, some things I do want to bring up here and so forth. First of all, in regard to the numbers, I did get, uh, numbers from Jennifer, I passed those, uh, my, it was part of the proposal that was presented two weeks ago, I hadn't heard anything about the numbers not being accurate. Um, if they are, certainly, I don't think they're far off, uh, there may be a little bit more and so forth, and so Jennifer, be, certainly be glad to, to get your, your assessment on it, but you're not gonna see it be, uh, anything significantly different, I don't think, and I'm confident in that. Few other things, uh, going back again, just a few other, other things that have been circulated that I just want to address. One is the, the current claim that the prosecutor's office is fully staffed currently, and that certainly, that just is not true. And let me go through. And let me go through, uh, that with you a little bit. Again, I've had, I've had a complete turnover of my assistant prosecutors, plus one or two over the last three years. And you heard about, "We don't want a revolving door in the prosecutor's office, we don't have, want to have a turnstile." But because of the 21, 2021, uh, comp study, that's exactly what happened. Uh, and that's what, what continues to happen. Again, the, the turnover has continued and is recently as last fall. I've, I've had, I currently am down one licensed attorney. Um, again, I, you know, for much of this year, we were down two licensed attorneys, that's 40% of my attorney's staff. And that makes a huge difference in what we do. So, we are and continue to be in crisis situation in that regard. And again, it's, we've, I've cobbled together a staff of excellent attorneys, we're still not full staff. But again, it's, it's, it's a tenuous relationship. And what I don't want to see happen, and I think what will happen if this is ignored, is we're playing Russian roulette with the safety of, of the public. I don't mean to be over dramatic, but that's reality. You just look, again, next door, um, it's all over the, the state of Michigan, but next door is just a terrible example. St. Joe County, a similarly sized prosecutor's office, they have one assistant prosecutor in that office right now. Uh, the Attorney General is stepping in and doing the work of the prosecutor's office. And I don't think that any of our citizens want that to happen here in Cass County. And those cards could fall pretty quickly in this county. That occurred, I know that the questions, uh, Mr. Chair, you asked about, a little bit about, you know, my, does, does my staff, are they gonna go? They, they love it here, and they want to stay here, some of them grew up here and so forth. But they've got families to feed, they've got student loans to pay, they are graduate, uh, uh, level in, individuals. There's a lot of debt to get to that position. And they know that in southwest Michigan, they're paid at the lowest rate. They know that in, uh, with other, throughout the state of Michigan, if you compare them to other similarly situated, uh, counties, that we don't fare well in that regard. So, the other, another one, that the county should not respond to a crisis, you know, I've heard people say, "We just shouldn't respond to this crisis situation regarding public safety." And, and that's not true, we shouldn't, we should be responding to this, um, you know? And, again, I, I think it's important to remember very respectfully, everything that happens in this county is important. But public safety, not only is it a catchy phrase to say it's job one, but that's what our constitution says. Um, you know, public, uh, you know, that, you guys are created, government, for public protection. And you heard a lot of people talking about the importance of what happens when you have a good staff and when we play Russian roulette and we lose that staff. And in that regard, this board has addressed this type of crisis here just recently. And I think wisely, a unanimous vote by each and every one of you to increase the salaries of the deputies. And again, that was a contract that was closed, that was done. It was, it was settled, and it had time to run out and so forth. But it was important, even to risk the fact that there could be a lawsuit from other unions saying, "Why are you doing it for them and not for us?" and so forth, uh, and other entities in the government. You did it because you were leaders, and you realized that that was critical to do that. And you gave each of those deputies a well-deserved 10% raise, far more than what I'm asking for my assistant prosecutors on, on a percentage basis. Um, you know, mine is far less than that. Uh, and, and the crisis we have in my office is no less severe as, as what was in, in the Sheriff's Department. And you can look, too, I've heard some people say, "Well, looks like you're getting a few more people," you know, "You're, you've been going up and down, but right now you're out of crest." Well, I, I'm proud and happy to see that the Sheriff's Department also is having people in the academy, and they've got people in the cycle that are coming and so forth. But they're still in critical condition in regard to, to staffing and so forth, and you addressed that for them. Um, you said it, we've gotta step up for our citizens and do that. You need to do that for the prosecutor's office as well. I've just heard in the past, and just heard a, a few minutes ago, that the class comp will take only a, a few months, you know, maybe it'll be here in December. Well, in this room, there is maybe myself and maybe a couple other people who have been through two other class comp studies. And I can tell you, having been through two of them, that's an extremely optimistic view of what can happen. They just don't go that quickly. Uh, that, you know, the, the ones I've been involved in have been, you know, two years, more than two years before they're finally implemented. And, and you know, what, what my assistant prosecutors are hearing is saying, "Mr. Fitz, you know, we like you as a boss, but you promised us 14 months ago, you know, I know that you met with the, with the chair in December of 2022 and said, 'This was my top issue,' and I appreciate the fact that I've got this on the floor here again today. But 14 months ago, I came to you, uh, through the salary committee, I said, 'Look, you just approved 11 other, uh, uh, grade changes and so forth. I need this for my office too, but I got no traction from you.'" And, and again, too, that's just, you know, I was told long, long ago as a kid, you know, to always speak the truth. And sometimes the truth may be a little bit painful and it may be a little harsh to say, but the truth, it's always better to shed the light of truth on things, and that's just the reality. You know, and sometimes, you know, when you're a nice guy, you get run over a little bit. And I'll tell you frankly, that's what I feel, because for two years I've been asking for this for my staff, and, including with this current board, 14 months ago. And it's fallen on deaf, deaf ears. Um, a comp study will not take just a few months. If we're realistic, it's gonna take a year, year and a half, two years. And again, as I said, in January 2025, some of you may not be here, and we may, so we're asking those guys, "Go on, I hope and pray." I'm hoping you all are.
I've got some questions.
Sure.
Yeah.
Matt?
Yeah, go ahead.
I've got two quick ones, and if you can't answer them right now, that's not a big deal.
Okay, sure, sure, Ryan.
First one, do you currently have an APA assigned as a CDET prosecutor?
Yes.
Okay. Second question, if this crisis is seri enough, serious enough, would you give up your vacant APA position for potential raises?
I think, I'll give you a complex answer to, response to that, Ryan.
If you don't want to respond, I'm not gonna understand.
No, I do, I, I, I will, I'll give you the best I can at the, at the spur of the moment. Um, study has come out, um, very clearly, uh, supported by national data, that my office should have nine and a half assistant prosecutors. Um, right now I've got, including my chief assistant, uh, I've got five. Um, I think it would be a dangerous decision to say, "We're gonna take another assistant prosecutor away from you." It's not to say, Ryan, that I wouldn't consider that, or Mr. Layton, I guess, but, but you know.
We all said you're gonna have to be problem solvers, so this is a potential solution to the problem.
Yeah, and I think there's better ways to solve that, but again, certainly, that's something I, I, I can reflect on and I can probably get back to you pretty quickly in, in regard to that, that question. Um, so, um, you know, certainly, like you said, you know, explore all options.
Just referring back to this sheet, I'm not sure if admin included this or you included this. Speaking with a Barien commissioner, there were quite a few vacated positions amongst their prosecutor's office in their law and courts building for people to get raises. There were vacant spots that were open for eight, 10, 12, 18 months, and they vacated the positions for other people to get raises.
Yeah, I, I, I think the prosecutor's office, I think it was one, maybe two, that they did.
Yeah, I don't know where the numbers were specifically amongst the departments.
It, it, was that, I don't want to consider that, all right, thank you. Just, uh, concluding on the, you know, a little, a little bit more on the comp study, you know, I think you gotta recognize too, you know, when a mistake is made, you need to correct it and you need to correct it promptly. You don't want to kick it down the road. And, and my assistant prosecutors, they've been shortchanged, they've lost two years of, of, of pay as to where it should have been. They've already been shortchanged for two years. And what they're hearing through their ears, and what I'm hearing too, is that wait another couple years before we make it right. And, and I just don't think that's correct. Matt, if I could, uh, you know, if you want to go ahead, go ahead, that's fine.
Okay. And, and you and I have had several conversations about this. And, you know, I just want to make a couple points, is that, you know, we, we talk about our adjacent counties. And I think it is important to figure out what are those adjacent counties we're looking at? You know, I mean, I see some of the information we had provided, Kalamazoo, Barien. We're not in the same ballpark when we talk about taxable value, um, and things like that. Population, so it, you're not, it's not really apples to oranges. Now, I will, will agree that when you looked at, we had participated in several other, um, class compensation studies from other counties. Part of the, part of that is they do give you some information back from them to say, "Hey, if you give us the stats, you know, we'll give you, we'll share with you what our, our wage scales were." And I'll, I'll admit, I think when you look at that, you know, the assistant prosecutor, one and two positions probably do need some adjustment. But I think the other thing to keep in mind is that we seem to be approaching this from the perspective of comparing other counties. But the wage scale applies to all non-union employees. And that's part of what the class comp is doing, is setting what that scale is. We don't, with the other 11 positions you're talking about, we didn't come to the board and say, "Hey, you know, these positions in this neighboring county pay more money, so we need to adjust these." The key is, if you're gonna make a change, and I, and, and I welcome the argument, I think this is the part of the problem, is that this needs to be the point of the discussion. If the grading is incorrect, why is it incorrect? Where is the error in that, and how does that fit within our current scale? Because we, we aren't necess, we aren't going out every year and looking at every position and saying, "Well, this one doesn't pay enough, let's adjust the scale so that it fits these." You know, we do have to take into account the class comp is gonna do that for everything. And if the current grading is wrong, let's talk about that. Let's focus on that part of it and not necessarily these comparisons from other counties.
Well, well, Matt, I think it's all relevant, and that certainly is part of my discussion here today. Um, and, and it was part of the materials I provided to you too, which, which, uh, you received, and, and I'll, I'll be getting to that here in a moment. But let, let me go to one of your comments about the, the comparison of other counties. And maybe I'll, I'll respond with your question, with the question. With the increases I'm requesting, where does that put us in comparison to the other counties? Does that put us up where they're getting paid in Barien? Does it get us, put us up where we're put in, in Kalamazoo? Does it put, put us where they're paid in Alleghan and, and Van Buren? And, and it's rhetorical, the answer's no. It, and you know that as well, Matt. We, we stay right at the bottom. Yet, but it gives my assistant prosecutors the belief that, that you guys, that you care about them. And I know you do, but again, too, sometimes you have to do that with the actions. Yeah, Matt, or, right.
Not to correct you, but it would actually put us in the middle with the proposed raises.
Who, it would put us above St. Joe County.
Put Van Buren belows, so it'd make us number four out of seven, or six.
Fourth out of six, okay, well, still in the bottom half, yeah.
It's not bottom.
Yeah, well, again, and I, I'll look at those again too, but I, I actually, um, I don't think we would be above Van Buren County. But, but again, too, I don't have those numbers right in front of me.
It says proposed for CAS 63, 368, Van Buren's currently at 60,002.93%.
Mind if I take a look at that, Matt, or Ryan?
I'll compare it to the other piece of paper that we had.
Yeah, Van Buren, what it shows, again, is that we would, a few changes, Ryan, we would go from 63 to 92. That's still underneath Barien, which is a 60 to 108. It's still underneath Alleghan, which is 75 to 98.
Right.
Yeah, so.
I'm saying we, it would put CAS above St. Joe and Van Buren, is what I stated.
It wouldn't put us above Van Buren, Van Buren is 60 to 108, we would be 63 to 80.
I'm talking this number right here, 63,368 is higher than 60,293.
Yeah, and 108 is certainly far lower, $16,000.
Right, I'm not comparing this column, I'm comparing this column.
And I'm just saying, let's compare both, let's compare the, the comp entity, which is.
Well, when I spoke, I was talking about the starting.
Yeah, but I, I want to talk about them both.
Well, I think the other thing too is total compensation. You know, I think the other thing that we're not seeing is we're looking at wages overall. You know, we're, we're looking, and that's what we need to be considering, is not just the wages piece of it, but DC contributions, for example. Uh, I mean, those are pretty substantial. When you look at what the county's doing here versus some of these other areas, I mean, it, I, I can't say empirically I know all of that, but I think it is important to understand, you know, that it's not just the, uh, the, you know, the sal, annual salaries. I mean, there are the other benefits that play into it too. So it's important that we're looking at total compensation.
There, there's just two other points I would bring up.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So in our previous conversation earlier today, I, you know, one plate that was advocate, if this motion were to get approved, what would happen then, if we were to get the results from the class comp study, if we were to overshoot it, right? And just to be completely honest, the conversation you and I had, said, you, you mentioned that people would be in agreement of being able to raise and lower if something were to, you know, those results came back differently. And I, I would, you know, I don't know if we can ever lower anybody's pay after we've agreed to increase it. The other aspect of the conversation that I want to bring forward is, if we were to approve this, it would be very difficult for us to be able to say no to the next person who wants to get in line before the class comp study is fully completed.
And, and Sam, or Mr. Bear, I, I respectfully disagree with that. It's gotta be, and I do agree, and, and again, I, I know Mr. Mr. Newton is anxious to get there, but I do agree with him, it has to be something that, that is, that is consistent with the, the scoring. And I'm fully prepared to show you that that, again, that is, as part of the materials I've supplied you as well, you may have missed it, again, it was, it was a supplemental to it and so forth. But, um, I agree, it's gotta be part of, it's gotta be supported by the data from the class comp study criteria. And, and if you, if you're able to be patient with me, I'll get to that as well. But there are a couple other points, because there's been a lot, uh, I think all of you know, there's been a lot of information swirling around, a lot of discussions, uh, you know, not all of us are privy to all of those discussions, but I've heard a number of, and so there's a thing, a few things I do think are important to, just to mention.
Before you go on, Vic?
Yes.
I'm gonna let the, everybody here know, as Chair of this board, I am making a conscious decision to allow this to keep going. So we're gonna sit here until we figure this out. So if anybody has any issues with that, and you're not on this board, you know, but we're gonna sit here and do what we need to do to do the right thing for Vic, or not, and for the rest of the county, because this is important. Please continue.
Thank you. This one, I'll be very quick, because I don't think any of you necessarily feel this, but just to be sure, you never want to assume anything. Um, you know, there's been some claim that I'm asking for pay increases for my entire staff. And again, that's obviously not the case. It's not for me, it's not for my chief assistant, as Mary said, it's not for most of my staff. It is for my three assistant prosecutors in the office currently. Others are saying that other counties are not responding to this, uh, but they are. Um, you know, you go, you know, Barien County was mentioned, Ionia, Branch, Van Buren, St. Joe, Lapeer, Alleghan, Otsigo, and many others are doing mid-course, uh, re-adjustments because of this crisis. Again, I also agree with Mr. What, uh, Administrator Newton says, that's not the only thing you want to look at. But it is a relevant figure, because with your house is on fire, you can't just say, "We'll get you water in a year or two." Um, you know, you, you've got to address the fire when it's there. Also, you know, the, I've heard the claim that there's no process for seeking a reclassification of a pay, of a pay grade. And I just encourage you to look at your, your, the minutes for the August 18th, 2022 meeting, which gives a clear process, it says if there's a, a, if you believe that there's a, uh, something needs to be reclassified, it gets taken to the administrator, the administrator assesses it and comes to you with a recommendation in that regard. And certainly, I've been, uh, working with the administrator on this and so forth, and, and, uh, and, you know, I think that our pro, our proposal was appropriate. One other thing before I get into the, the final area, and it's lengthy, but a final area of my, my discussion, and that is some claim that the prosecutor's office is seeking special treatment. And again, that just is not true. What we're seeking is actually the same treatment as any other department or office in the county that was provided regarding the 11 different positions in multiple offices in the county that received a pay grade change. And again, remember, this isn't me coming to you just before a comp study about this. This is me coming to the commissioners as a whole two years ago and to you 14 months ago. And again, these people, Aiden, and not Ken, but, you know, Mary and others, I've told them again and again, be patient, they tell me that they're gonna listen and they're gonna address and so forth. And, and, you know, I'm here now, and I am disheartened to hear, well, I want your people to wait another year or two, Ryan.
So, based off this sheet, the top line for current APA 1, grade 10, step 5, the notes on the far right-hand side say, "November raised, two-step increase in annual, January raised slash step increase, one step plus 3%." So you've got a current position that was just raised by two steps last November?
Let me take a look, Ryan, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Very top line on the, the current, see the notes here?
Okay, you were talking about step, not grade.
Right.
Yeah, I'm discussing.
I'm just saying, there was some movement versus no movement.
Right, and certainly it was merited, uh, you know, as, as Commissioner Lawrence said, you know, you pay somebody that's worthwhile, worth what, you pay them what they're worth, for instance, you know? And we're not doing that, very honestly, I mean, I've got, and, and you know, perhaps at some point in the future, that'll be addressed. I've got Mr. Stecker, who's been a prosecutor for 31 years. If he had done his whole career here in Cass County, um, about 18 years ago, he would be at the top of, top step. And he's not there at this point, um, you know? Um, so, um, has, was there a, a change? I think that was for, for Mr. Ronning, same thing, Mr. Ronning was an individual who, or is that Mr. Ronning, or is that?
APA 2?
Yes, if it's a, what was the change to, Ryan?
APA 2 came in at, hired at step 7, annual, one step plus 3% in January. Then the vacant APA 1 is the 57, 509. And then you've got the CDET APA 2, 72, 873, hired at step 5.
Okay, that's Mr. That would be Mr. Stecker.
Go ahead, Matt.
We need to be very careful in one respect, is that, while I know that we receive positions and, you know, we, we often may know who positions are, we need to keep it about positions.
Yeah.
Those classifications, we cannot make it about people. And that's how we approach these sorts of things too, right? Is that we don't, you know, no matter how well somebody's performing or, you know, any, that, that is not a, a factor that we take into account with respect to. that we take into account with respect to the wage scale. It's about what is the grading for this type of a position? And I would note with the wage scale, that the idea of hiring to the top of the wage scale was really only a response to, you know, a really, a huge shortage across the board for employees. And I think during COVID or post-COVID, the policy that was in effect before that and is in effect now is that hiring is up to the midpoint. I mean, part of that is, is that when people come into the county, you can get hired up to that mid-range, and there's room for growth later on. If you're always hiring at the top end of the pay scale, there's no room to move anywhere. You're automatically topped out right at that point. And then there's even more pressure at some points to then continue to want to drive larger increases because of that. I mean, so, you know, that plays into this as well. We, as a general rule, it's not, there were a few years there where, I think, because of the supply and demand of labor, that it changed that. But as a rule, we don't typically hire at the top end of the pay scale.
We also have to be careful with timing and with this time. Even though I said we're gonna be here, that's not meaning that you have unlimited speaking time, Vic. So I'm gonna have to ask you to get to the point.
Yep. And obviously, some of my time has been taken up by questions and by...
Yeah, I get it. You're good. You're good.
And, you know, Matt, having been around longer than you, I can tell that there have been many instances where people have been brought in because of what they've been to the table at the top of the pay scale. It's required a motion by the commissioners and so forth. But it goes back to, you know, what's said in the good book, you pay a labor what they're worthy of. And again, that's certainly, if somebody, if Tom Brady is going from the New England Patriots to Tampa Bay, they're not gonna say, "Look, we're only gonna give you half of what you're worth because you didn't win any Super Bowls here." They gave him top pay because that's what he deserved. And that's the same with any employee. But let me get to the other core issue, which is, again, how did we get here? And let me speak candidly and respectfully, but I will speak the truth as I see it. The county decided back in 2020, 2021 to do a comp study and to try to save some money by doing it in-house. It was well-intended, and the study was done. And the players that were involved in it, they came from, representatives from the court system, from admin, and from the sheriff's department. Unfortunately, it did create winners and it did create losers. It was opposed by me, the final result, but to no avail. And how did it create winners and losers? And I am not saying this is intentional. That certainly is not what I'm saying. But, and really, for those that worked on it, sometimes no good deed goes unpunished and so forth. But the reality is, that's what it did. There were pay increases, of the pay increases, the big ones, of three grades or more. 10 of those came in the court system. Four of them came in the administrator's system. One in the clerk register, one in the treasurer's office, one in the sheriff's department, zero in my office, and zero in district court. Put it another way, the courts, approximately 36% of their employees received pay increases under that comp study of three grades or more. Administrator's office and those under that umbrella, 17% of those employees received pay grade increases of three grades or more. In the prosecutor's office, 0% received pay grade increases of 3% or more. Appeal process has been set up. I've talked about that. You know, we've attempted to follow this. It was set up way back in August of 18th of 2022. And as mentioned, since the comp study was passed, and this last time, I'll try to make this the last time I mentioned it, but there were 11 position grades that were, changes were requested from multiple departments and multiple offices, and all of them have been granted until today and until this effort from some 14 months ago. In December, let me move ahead. As you know, and I've gone through a little bit of history again, you know, some real frustrations. We tried to do this in the early part of 2023. We received three minutes to discuss it. I've gone through some of those things, so I won't go through all of them again. But the bottom line is, is that here, we've got a wrong that as leaders, we need to correct. And if you look at the study, and again, I pass it on specifically, and let me, give me just one moment. This is the last point I want to make. And I know I've got that here with me. Just one moment. I provided each of you through an email of where the grading of the class comp study for my assistant prosecutors was incorrect. And again, it's on this sheet that you've all got. You may not have it right with you, but it's... Okay. And if you look, if you look at those with our, and let me start with APA 2. Where discretion and independent judgment. That scoring was scored at three. It's my position that should have been scored at three because they regularly exercise independent judgment, interpret, excuse me, they have a high degree of recognition and independent judgment, interpreting rules and policies. That's what the law is with high latitude and with work product and decisions governed by professional standards that are direct and develop those things. I think both my assistant, my assistant APA 2s, that that should be scored at a four rather than a three. If you go also to experience, when you look at an APA 2, they normally, including the staff I have currently, have far more than 1.5, or far more than three to five years of experience. They're over five years of experience. That I believe should have been scored at two in both of those instances. And again, in fairness to the scores on this and so forth, the description themselves de facto had three to five years. But the reality is that they're five years plus positions. Then you go to position complexity. And again, this is, this is, to me, the easiest one. You know, it was scored at a two that they have, that their job involves regular use of analytic and problem-solving skills as opposed to three, which the jobs involve extensive use of analytic and problem-solving skills with regular use of originality and preemptive problem-solving skills. When you're in APA 2 dealing with a murder, first-degree murder case, or even in APA 1, going to the Court of Appeals on these things, these are really, really complex situations where you have to make decisions on the fly, just as Mr. Ronning did in Stroud. And very frankly, the scoring for the APA 2 should be a 15 rather than the scoring that it was given. We're not asking for that. We're asking to be put at a 14. With the APA 1, again, it's our position that, and the position complexity, you heard Ms. Chassie testify or speak here today. You know, she's dealing with really complex stuff in the Court of Appeals and other things she does with abuse neglect. That should be scored at a three, which again, would make that a 12. So I guess at the bottom line, I think the scoring was wrong. I think it should be corrected, just as it's been in other situations. And I'll give you a couple other alternatives just to consider in regard to this. I think this should be passed, and it should be passed tonight. It's been two years of wrongdoing, so to speak, or two years where it's been incorrect, and it needs to be corrected now. And we shouldn't be penalized because we long suffered for two years and say, "Well, you just need to wait a little bit longer," which may be never, because we don't know if that class comp study will ever be passed. My assistant prosecutors have suffered a wrongdoing in that regard to the scoring for two years. But the other thing I'm certainly more than willing to do, if you question the accuracy of my scoring, you know, and I did have to do this once before for one other position. They said, "Mr. Fitz, you're wrong," because of those 11 positions, one of them was mine. They said, "Mr. Fitz, you're wrong." You know, that position was scored at a seven. That's where it should be. We took it to Rose Street, and Rose Street said, you know what they said? They said, "Mr. Fitz was correct. It was dramatically underscored, and that should be a 10, not a seven." So I'm glad to have this submitted to Rose Street so that, again, Rose Street can, and again, can assess it and determine whether or not my scoring of this is accurate. And if it is, you know, I would certainly hope that you would honor that. Because this isn't just, hey, let's, because somebody's asking, doing it. This is on the objective data that was utilized by the class comp study. So certainly, if we're correct in saying that this should be a 12 and a 14 rather than a 10 and a 12, I would hope that you would honor that. And if they say, "No, Mr. Fitz, you are incorrect in your scoring. You know, let's, you know, keep it at a 10 or 12, or let's make it 11 or 13," or whatever they determine, you know, we will live by that as well. And I think that, I don't think is the perfect solution, but I think it's an acceptable one for us as well. So I appreciate your time. I certainly, you know, would say finally in closing, this is, again, this is long overdue. It's something that needs to be done. We are unlike other offices in the county, you know, I'll just maybe go back to what Administrator Newton said. He said, you know, there was a time that he could take those up to, you know, right up to the top of a pay scale. And that was because we were in a crisis. We couldn't hire people. And I'm glad that most of the county is no longer in that crisis, but we still are. And I don't want us to become a St. Joe County. I want us to keep the excellent staff that I have behind me. And I hope that you see the objective reasons for doing that here this evening as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the time.
As a parliamentarian.
I just have to say something, you know. We are not in crisis mode with this, but I mean, St. Joe County, Three Rivers is 20 to 30 minutes that way. $6,500 pay increase, I'd change. I just have to say that, like, St. Joe County is in crisis mode. There's an election this year. They're gonna have a new prosecutor. They're gonna want to try and make sure they fill that up, because nobody wants the attorney general running their county. So...
So I'm gonna ask you as a parliamentarian, at this point, do I ask for a vote, or what are we doing here?
It's up to you. Yeah, you can ask for a vote.
Well, it's up to me.
Yeah, yeah, you can ask for a vote. I mean, everybody still has the right to debate two times, 10 minutes each time. But if nobody wants to, then...
Then we go ahead and go do a vote on that.
So clarify that again. We can go to a vote, but then people have the right to debate it?
So you have the right to debate two times, 10 minutes each time, unless you extend your limit, your debate. But if you choose not to debate, then he can just go to it. He can just go to a vote.
Right.
So he just has to ask if anybody else wants to.
Yeah. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. We got too many lawyers in here. What are we doing?
I mean, I just have one thing that I want to circle back to. Commissioner Lawrence brought a great point about the open APA position. That just kind of stuck out in my mind. Is that something that, you know, we could consider at this point? I mean, what does it look like if we remove the position and then follow the class comp study, follow the approval of the budget? What would it look like to give that position back if, you know, just playing, you know, both sides here? If we remove the position in order to approve the motion today, and we desperately needed that position again later in the future, what do we do?
I mean, the other thing to keep in mind...
By state laws, we set the number of APAs.
We are getting into the budget, and, you know, there may be some... And looking at next year, there may be some requests to add additional people that may not be included in our current budget. I mean, that's something like, we haven't gotten there yet, right? As a board and as even a recommended budget. So I mean, that's one of the challenges, I think, as we look to next year, is like, we don't even know what that budget's gonna be comprised of yet. Or those requests haven't necessarily filtered into, you know, a requested budget yet that you guys have seen.
So I'm gonna go across the room by district. District one, you have anything else for those?
I think we should think on it a bit more.
District two, Commissioner Lawrence.
The only thing that I would have to say is that this is a bunch of crap. I look at this, I've been in the workforce 46 years. I look at what we're doing today. And I'm thinking to myself, what in the world is this mess here? Why is this so messed up? It's so confusing. You don't even know what you're doing. You guys don't even know what you're doing. You can make this simpler. And I say, that's where we need to go. I say, we need to approve this tonight, and we need to look at something that's a whole lot simpler than this stuff. How long does it take to get to top pay? 10 years?
I guess it depends on how you set it up and where you hire in.
Yeah, it just depends on how you set it up.
Well, I mean, if you hire in at step 5 and step 9 is the top rate, then you're looking at five years, roughly.
That's crap.
I guess it depends on how you look at it. Five years in a position to get to top pay probably isn't unreasonable.
How long did it take me to get to top pay? Three years. Everybody in the shop was at top pay between one and a half and three years. That went from those that were in, that just ran machines to people that were in skilled trades.
Talking different industries, different types of things, you know?
It makes more sense than this.
And I, you know, I don't know what the benefits look like either. I mean, that's the other thing. I mean, are we, are we looking at apples to apples in that comparison? Is that, I guess, the main thing?
Well, and that's something, I'm just saying that this is just a bunch of mixed up mess.
I mean, I would say the point is, is that where we need to focus, and we're not as much tonight as I think we could have seen, is those scores. We didn't get to that until the very end, but why are they not right? Why is this, why should it be, you know, what's the justification to move from a 3 to a 4? What's the justification to move from a 2 to a 3? I'm not saying it isn't there. Maybe it absolutely is. But that's where the previous 11 we're talking about focused. Here's where we got it wrong, and here's why. But much of what's in here in this packet is not that information. That's part of the challenge, and I think in part of why this has taken the time that it has is we need to be focused on those things. And if they are wrong, what's the justification for it? And then how do we fix it? And of course, the other, you know, elephant in the room here is that the class comp that we're looking to do is looming, too. We, in the years where we were, you know, looking at reclassifications in other employees, it wasn't on the eve of potentially looking at a whole class comp for all non-union employees either. So that complicates things a little.
All right. Commissioner Law. You have anything else?
Well, I'm just, I mean, you do have to consider looking forward to the budget, too. You know. And, you know, with the comp, too.
All right. Commissioner Hawley.
I have nothing else.
No more. Commissioner Marquetti.
Well, we're looking at $4,000. And we're looking at an old comp study that was, and no one is, no one, well, some people are here. I was not part of that. I don't know how they did the scoring or why they did the scoring. It doesn't look right to me. And all he's asking for is $4,000.
No, it's a little bit more than that. Yeah, it's a little bit more than the $4,000 and $12,000 that wasn't...
$12,000 next year, I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says 42, 36, and 24 cents. If we're done from now for the rest of the budget here, then $12,708 next year.
I didn't skip you, Sam, but I started with these, so that's why I'm going around this way. Commissioner Lee. Oh, I'm sorry. Keep on going.
I think that, I never heard so many complaints about anything else other than that comp study. That comp study that was done in-house, it was unfortunate. Doesn't look right to me from what I've looked at. I never saw that, that comp study information that we got. I've never seen that before. This is my first time seeing that.
Anything else? Okay. Because I'm taking time for everybody. That way I can keep track. Parliamentarian there. You're next. Commissioner Lee, anything else?
Just if I lived in the eastern half of the county, I mean, St. Joe County is gonna be hungry. And I know that we can't compare to them in size, but, I mean, they're gonna want, they're gonna be hungry for having assistant prosecutors there. And I just am concerned that we might lose a few just because of that.
All right. What are we doing, Board? We went around once. You want me to go around one more time, or do I call for a vote?
I just got one more thing I'd like to say.
Yep.
Gets approved, class comp study shows something different. How do they, how do we correct it, though? Are they willing to take a cut? Do we have some...
That'd be tough. Quickly, please.
Again, if the class comp study comes back with something differently, and I'm sure there'll be an appeal process. We lose that appeal process, yeah, we'll look at that.
I don't know how we can legally do that. Cut somebody's salary.
The last time we did a comp study, we said no one would lose money, and they didn't.
Right.
Right. There were people who didn't, who didn't get as much as they felt they deserved, but nobody lost money.
Right.
No one. We didn't, we didn't lower anyone's salary.
But I think in this case, it's kind of a unique in the sense that trying to get ahead of the class comp study.
Hate to mess with you, but according to the rules, you're, got your toys. Anybody else? Anybody else? So I will call for a roll call vote to see if we move this forward or not, unless anybody has any objections.
Can you clarify?
What is the motion?
That's what I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, said that just so I can figure it out, so it's not just me. You know, we got eight commissioners here.
So I'll make a motion to have Administrator Newton, Jen and Beth schedule a meeting with Victor, crunch the numbers more based off of the, the scale and see if he can bring the ramifications for why each number is changing the way he has it written and then bring it back to us after you've done that.
And will we vote on that, like a cow that came back by the cow, will we vote on it at that point or delay it for the next business meeting?
I mean, you could always have special.
Yeah, you could just throw it in a special meeting to get it done.
Before the cow, yeah. All right, motion on the floor.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor in support, any discussion on that motion?
Labor roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lawrence?
No.
Commissioner Locke?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Howie?
Yes.
Commissioner Burr?
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
For clarification, this doesn't give them the pay raise, this is just to see if it's, this is to compare, to see the reasoning behind each number, each, each value change for what he has written down on this piece of paper as well as the APA one on this piece of paper. Okay, now.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Tells all of them?
So you have two domes.
Two domes? All right, so the motion passes that, we're gonna come back. All right. Where are we at? Public comment, this is for anything other than the agenda items, yes, sir?
I just want to clarify a comment that I made earlier, I don't want anything to be said to be misconstrued to say I was in any way in opposition to the renovation of the old courthouse. When Commissioner Marquetti and I served on the EDC together, I was at the forefront of those who urged that we start with the old courthouse and do that. As a former elected official and as someone, as the secretary of, of a federally subsidized facility, I clearly understand designated funds and as a business owner, I clearly understand limited funds. So they, your, I, let me be clear that your major investment in the, the, this corner of this block does a lot for my major investment in a historic property at the corner of the next block. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood, I'm very much in favor of what's going on with the, with the old courthouse, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And you'll love it when it gets done.
I, no question in my mind.
I hope I don't, you don't see me looking up at you, well, I won't be looking at you.
When people say they don't want to see the undertaker, I always correct them, you always want to see the undertaker.
I want to see you, I want to see you.
When the undertaker can see you and you can't see them, that's dangerous.
Yes, ma'am, three minutes.
Yes, Corey, making it clear, I'm speaking as Corey Blyvis, resident of Newburgh Township. And I noticed that many people, when they talked about our community, said that it was a very beautiful place to live. And it is a beautiful place to live because we have an abundance of lakes and abundance of rural agricultural views, county parks, net DNR land, places to go fishing and it's a beautiful, we have a very beautiful community and historic areas as well. When you are working toward the new developments and bringing industry in, I just want to remind you to do as much as you can with your master plans and your planning of your community so that you can protect those open spaces of sometimes those get forgotten and next thing you know, it's all gone. And it's no longer the beautiful rural community that we all live here for.
That's a township issue, not here.
Master plans are part of, I thought, so, well, maybe I'm speaking to the township folks then. But you, you're also helping to make changes in the.
Yes.
And I also wanted to say that the MEAT program, even though, and I'm not speaking because I'm speaking as a resident, not.
You don't have to do that, Corey, we get you.
You understand. The MEAT program right now is under fire and may drastically change at the state level. So I am encouraging you to reach out to your legislators and talk to them. Because there are some conservation districts around the state who, we are a government, a government subdivision of the state of Michigan. And it's non-funded, we don't get taxes, we rely on millages, we rely on allocations from counties and grants and tree sales. And we are the ones who are, can help make a difference in protecting the land and water. Some of those districts may close if they don't have a MEAT technician. And it is our way in our rural community, it's a great way to get in the door with the farms to help make changes. I actually would like to see even more than what MEAT can do because we need to implement more best management practices and protect our lakes and streams more than we do right now. And I want to see progress, not going backwards. So everything that you can do, if you need to talk to me about who to talk to or some talking points, I have them here, so, thank you.
Thanks, Gordon.
Fifteen seconds, I just wanted to say hi. Appreciate the time here tonight and Matt will look forward to scheduling meetings for sometime next week.
All right. Whew, that was ten seconds. Can I, I'm gonna end this meeting.
Do?
Yes. Let's go home. You ain't gotta go home, but you gotta get out of here.
Technically, I don't have to do that. The thing we're gonna do is we're gonna just.
I, I understand.